This conference will now be recorded.
There we go.
Roll call before the council liaison.
Yep, the roll call is Carter Tannahill is I see you here Frank Robbins, I see you, you're here. Paul Roberts, I see you, you're here Christina Lucero, I see you, you're here and Gage Hunt, I see you, you're here, okay, I also see Ms. Silveira and Mr. Davila. I will, this meeting of the July 6th, Charter Review Committee is now will now come to order and first order on the agenda. Well, does any do any citizens have any comments? I will take it from your silence that you that you do not and we'll move to the first discussion and possible action item which will be comments from council liaison, Mr. Davila. Did you have a comment or are you just getting me back on track?
I was just trying to get you back contact, Mr. Durbin, I just wanted to make sure that you opened the meeting correctly and so forth. Thank you very much for.
No, no problem, no problem. Thank you for flagging me down. I intentionally not asked didn't answer a question earlier. It's like I do it all at once and still screwed it up. But, okay, my apologies, let's. If you don't have any comments, we'll move on to the potential changes and we'll move on to section 303. Which currently, well, nobody likes this language. And I think there is a question as to whether or not the city secretary should be the judge of the qualifications of all applicants. I don't know how to word it. Any better than that, though, because effectively what I think she is. Is the the initial screener of the applications to ensure that the applications contain all the information they're supposed to contain. But beyond that, I don't think she has or should have any any power to claim somebody's a valid candidate or not. In terms of an understanding of her role, is that about, are we all pretty much on the same page on that? Yeah, yeah. Okay.
So who are we going to put in control of this?
Well, the city, the city council is ultimately in control of this and of the elections. Is my understanding, is that is that correct in terms of? Is that your understanding as well, Erin?
Say that again, Mr. Chairman.
I was answering a question from Ms. Lucero, she asked if the city secretary is not the the judge of election qualifications, who is? And I said, well, ultimately, I think it's the city council. You know, I, I, I think she can and probably should receive the applications and review them for you know, some sufficiency or or having everything on them. But in terms of of judging whether or not somebody is eligible to stand as a candidate, I don't really think that's her role.
So, um, that actually, the, the county voter registrar is the officer primarily responsible for administering the provisions of voter qualifications. So, but when you have elections at the city level, oftentimes what happens is that those questions end up going to the city clerk or secretary. And and so that's, that's why this person was named or this, this position was named as the judge of voter qualifications, because that's how that typically functions. I think there was some discussion earlier in your previous meetings about someone on council being the judge of voter qualifications. And having some concerns about those members who may be running for office, making the determination about that. So really, the the true person is your is your county, county registrar, except for city elections.
Well, that's what we're talking about here.
Yeah, so your, your city secretary is typically held that role.
Okay.
For most, that's how that functions.
Okay, Frank, go ahead. I have some concerns about that.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with you about the city secretary and the council. Let me point out that this section does two very different things. And this isn't the only place in our charter and and Rob, you've gone through this that will find the charter doing different things. In the title of something that doesn't have anything to do with the title. And here's what it here's this second, it talks about the qualifications for candidates. And officers and officials appointed by the city. Now, the city secretary certainly shouldn't do that.
Right.
And and so that's why I liked the there's two things, let me just point out quickly. I like the way that it's written and we added a provision about recusing in the disputed election. And I liked what we added.
Well, I, I got about halfway through that ad and I can't. I was headed in the right direction, but I didn't get it all.
Well, we I thought we agreed with something at the last meeting, it's a long sentence, but I whatever, I liked it. But I think it ought to be city secretary and and I'm you can suggesting that we move the provision that talks about who decides who's qualified to be an officer or an official. But the sentence is okay, and then go ahead and add the the recusal piece.
The sentence with with the council shall be the judge with the recusal, that's what you're wanting?
Well, the way, the way I'm looking at the 21 June, 21 June piece. And the sentence that I thought we added was no member of the council will act as a judge of the election in dispute in which that member is or was running as a candidate and will be subject to automatic recusal on any dispute involving that member. Now, I don't know what it what qualifies as a disputed election. But the idea of recusing, if you're going to have to be a judge about that, that's, that's great.
Yeah, I don't have that language. Perhaps that was a, that was a suggested language, I mean, I and I went back through and believe me, I listened to the whole. I listened to the whole damn last meeting over again. Putting this together because we're getting down to the wire here, I wanted to make sure I had it right. Perhaps that was some suggested language that got suggested, but I don't think we voted on it. Christina?
Thank you, Chairman. So our officers and officials are not elected in, they're appointed in. So that's totally shouldn't even be in this sentence. So it should just be about the election and I still think that it should be the city secretary. What we have is city council.
Yeah, here, here's the here's my issue with having the city secretary appointed to do it and that responsibility. Is that if somebody is disqualified and they're unhappy about that, then their, then their recourse is is basically in a court to try and and what's called mandamus, the city secretary to put somebody back on the ballot. I don't know that we want to subject the city secretary to that sort of litigation abuse. It's not really abuse if she does it wrong, but it's, it's, but that's the resolution and it basically gets her ordered by a court to to stick somebody back on the, on as the qualifications, so. Go ahead, Christina.
In my experience, the city secretary then went to, I guess, the city manager and then Erin and then it was all like chain of command down. So I mean, the city secretary is not going to be disqualifying someone on her own. And then also.
If we make her the judge of the electrician, election qualifications, she it will, it's her responsibility. Whether she gets help or not.
We also don't have like a strict criteria for anyone to run for city, I mean, pretty much anyone can run for city council. It's not like we have, I mean, you can't be in arrears, you have to be living here for at least a year. I mean, it's not.
It isn't brain surgery.
A business degree or, you know, a public office, you know, experience or, I mean, really kind of anyone can run for city council as long as they meet the four little qualifications.
Well, I agree that it's not a difficult checklist to go down and make sure that somebody is qualified or at least meets the obligation, claims to meet the obligations. I mean, the, the, the application's got it all on there. Let me see what Gage has to say first. Go ahead.
Yeah, what, why don't we leave it with the city secretary certifying the qualifications, but with the right of a disqualified candidate to appeal to council?
That's, that's.
Or even say the city secretary with.
But I like what Gage just suggested, but Frank disagrees, I'd like to hear why.
Yeah, me too.
Kiss.
Keep it simple, students.
Keep it simple, too. And and Rob and Erin might want to comment and I'm just trying to think through what happens in the time it takes on an appeal. But that still ultimately leaves the responsibility with the city council. Now. So there, let me, let me comment about it's pretty simple and it's on the form. The city secretary with the help of the city attorney have written letters to candidates, you're, you're nodding your head, Christine, you know about that one. Yeah, which were not related to stuff that was in our charter. So there's some other stuff and how does things happen? Well, the parties get together and write letters to folks and that person that I know of decided not to enter the race after they got the letter, so. So I don't know anybody, any time that the, that the, a person has ever gone all the way to the council to find out whether they were qualified or not. I think there's a pretty good, at least in our town, and I've never seen an issue in the others that I work for in which the, you got to the election and the election's over and there were issues about qualifications, so it ain't broke. So I think as Arch heard me say one time, if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
But.
Sorry.
That's okay.
In the meantime, before, and I'm gonna let everybody talk some more, but in the meantime, Frank, the language that you read that you thought we had all agreed to, can you post that in the chat section? So that, so that we can all see it and I can copy it into the if we all agree on it, I can copy it all into the, because you did have some good language in terms of recusal stuff. Yeah, sure. That I think we'll all agree on. Okay, I'm sorry, I interrupted you, Christina.
That's okay, but in my instance, the letter that I received was a conflict of interest and I dealt with it with the city secretary, Erin and Josh. And it never even came above or to the council, so, I mean, there are other people who are actually doing the job of it. So that's why I'm saying is it's just a far overreaching canopy to say the council does it because the council really doesn't do it.
Well, I was just looking for some, some method of remedy for a disqualified candidate to pursue outside of going to court. I'd rather that we avoid litigation as much as possible. And and so if if the right appeal body would be the city manager and the city attorney and the city secretary is a three-person committee. If we want to make the appeal at that level, then I'm good with that, too. I'm just looking for a way to give a disqualified candidate a means of remedy without going to court. That's all.
Yeah, no, and I think that's a good idea to have some kind of a backstop that somebody says, oh, well, wait a minute. Because even if all of those people say, yeah, you're still disqualified, they're still going to go to court. I mean, and but that's, that's but that but it's like I said, this is, it's really a simple checklist, basically, on election qualifications. It's, it's not, it isn't brain surgery. And, you know, about the only place I can think where a, where, where this could come into play is if somebody wants to run for council because they're ticked off about something. And the city secretary says, well, you owe the city some money and they claim, no, I don't. That's, that's, that's where I see a problem arise. And and you know, what, what do you do about that? I mean, is it is kind of up in the air. If it's, if you claim that you yeah, I don't know, I don't know.
The person to clear their allegation, you know what I mean?
But that's, that's, I mean, it just because the city council says they owe money doesn't mean they don't owe any money, doesn't mean they owe.
Optics, too, like if somebody decides they want to run for city council, they're like, wait a minute, you know, is the city council is going to be the one reviewing and saying if I'm qualified or not? It's just an optics thing with that, too, though.
Yeah, yeah. No, I, I, I think that's right.
But I like Gage's, I mean, you know, it can be appealed to, you know.
Sure, give up, give, have a backstop for whoever it is, right? And and it probably, the other good thing is, is it probably gets that poor employee, the city secretary, out of the line of fire. Because then somebody else is going to get mandamished.
Yeah.
Or at least get the blame, she might still get the order that says, put him back on. But but that's, that is, and that may be something that council needs to address when they look at the qualifications for candidates is, is making that making the somebody in financial arrears to the city. That there needs to be some sort of finality to that, a final judgment or or something, rather than just the city claiming that it owed money.
I, I, I say we, we get to a vote on this pretty quick, I, you know, I, I can live with or without it. Frank is right in that it's going to be the vast majority of cases. And like you were describing it, Rob, you know, I was only looking at, at a backstop to to minimize the chances of litigation, so. Yeah, one way or another, I think we need to come to some kind of consensus on this one pretty quickly.
I do, too. And hang on a second, let me get, everybody look in the chat language. And in the chat section and take a look at, at the language Frank was talking about for at least that a second sentence.
I think that's yours, isn't it, Rob?
No member of council will act as a judge of the election in dispute. Well, that sounds brilliant, I'll take credit for it. I don't recall doing it, but that, but things, things happened pretty fast and furious during these meetings and and it could be, but I have, I have essentially added that as the second sentence to this paragraph. The first sentence as it sits now reads, the city secretary shall be the judge of the qualifications of all candidates for officers and officials. And it, you're right, the, the pointed stuff doesn't need to be in there. Although she does act as the, somebody acts as, I mean, who, who verifies that? You know, when you submit your application to be on a board, that you submit it to the city secretary. The council appoints them, but do they get a list from her of people that meet the qualifications? And I don't have a problem with her doing that. Because those are, I mean, those jobs are serving at the, at the pleasure of the council anyway. So I'll read that again, the city secretary shall be the judge of the qualifications of all candidates for officers and officials of the city appointed by the council. Christina?
For all candidates for city council. Do we have to say that? I guess, no, we are in city council.
They're, they're, they're officers.
Okay.
Or officials.
That first sentence and then what Frank wrote in the thing? Or are we throwing Frank's comment out since we're now having the city secretary?
Well, no, I mean, no member of council, like, well, that's, that's true, if it goes to council.
You don't need the council in there if it's somebody else.
That's right. That's, that's what she said, yeah.
Do we want to say anything in there like Gage said about if there is someone disqualified that they'll go before our city attorney or something like that, or?
Well, no, no, I mean. No, no, and I don't mean any offense to Ms. Silveira, but she, she, she's city attorney, she's just a, she's, she's an employee, she.
I'm not a decision maker.
A, yeah, somebody that that can, is just going down a checklist. Just really all what they should do and if, and honestly, if they try to do more than that, they should be mandamus in order not to do it anymore. So I don't have a problem with, if we leave the city, if we leave it at city secretary, we can leave off the, the no member of council shall act as a judge. The whole second sentence. Do I have a motion from anybody?
How about, how about we say something like this, the city secretary will receive and review all qualifications of candidates, officers and officials of the city, then approved by council. Are, are we even having the approved by council at the end, appointed by council?
Well, the appointed by council is, is talking about the officials that are appointed by council. It's like when you apply for to be on this committee or or any committee, you send your application to that, to the city secretary, she reviews it, says, yeah, they qualify. And then passes it on to city council.
Should we break it into two sentences then, since one is one and one is elected, one is appointed?
Well, they're all candidates, so I don't, I don't know that we need to.
Are qualifications of all candidates for city council appointed by the council? Because that's how it's reading.
No. But I can see how you can, how it could be misread that way. All candidates. How about this? Okay. All right, I think I got it. Okay. The city secretary shall be the judge of qualifications of all candidates for elected officers and officials of the city appointed by council. You want me to stick it in the chat section?
It's sounding like they're doing the city council part, too, the council candidates.
Okay, hang on, the copy and paste doesn't work that well when you're. Oh, I know how to do this.
Any qualifications for all candidates for city council, period. The officers and officials of the city will be appointed by the council.
Well, we're not talking about appointments, we're just talking about. There we go. Figured it out. Okay, I just posted it in, and if we say that, I don't think we have to say, since the council's never involved, I don't think we have to have the recusal language in there. Everybody can see the chat? Do I have a motion for anything? I'd like to get a motion, we, this is essentially, we got to figure everything out tonight. Yes, Gage?
Yeah, I'll move that we approve the language that Rob has submitted in in this chat box for section 3.03.
I'll say it.
Okay, and just, just for clarification of the record, that language will say, section 3.03, judge of election qualifications, period. The city secretary shall be the judge of the qualifications of all candidates for elected officers and officials of the city appointed by, by the council, period. Okay, I've got a, I've got a motion and I've got a second. All in favor? All right, all right, all right, one, two, three. Hold your hands back up.
I still don't know if I want to, appointed by the council is still throwing me off.
All right, well, some officials of the city, for instance, all of us here are appointed, are appointed by the council.
But it's for the election for, and it's in the city council section. I mean, this is section, something.
You would like it better if it, if it, since they're the only elected officers, if there was a period after elected officers and we left the end officials of the city appointed by council off.
Well, this is in the city council article.
I, I'm not arguing with you, I'm just asking what you like better. I mean, I need language, I can't, we can't just go back and forth and say, I don't, I don't like this one.
Well, do we have another section on boards and commissions?
There you go.
Yes.
I mean, that, I think that's two different sentences in two different sections.
Okay, so we, we have a motion on the floor.
I make a motion to amend it, please.
Okay, do you make a motion to amend it as the, in, in the second chat box? The one at 5:36 PM?
I do, please.
Okay.
So now Gage has to acknowledge if he's willing to accept that.
You accept, you accept the amendment?
I, I, well, I, I don't have to accept it individually, I will, I'm going to, but I think we just need to vote on the amendment. We're just striking some language from what we approved, so.
No, but because we, because we had a motion on the floor and we didn't complete.
We actually, we did vote, we did vote.
Well, we stuck our hands up. Well, we stuck our hands up. But I didn't get, I didn't get a full count and, and Christina's hand went up and down, so basically, let's, for procedural purposes, I want to consider it amended motion. And, and an amended motion has got to be approved by the guy that made the original motion.
I'm, I'm okay with the amended language.
Okay, all right. All in favor of the amended language, which now reads, "Section 303, Judge of Election Qualifications, the city secretary shall be the judge of the qualifications of all candidates for elected officers." All in favor, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five. Frank, you an A?
I'm an A.
Okay, five to one. Got it, all right. Okay. Hey, amen. One down. Let's go to the next one. Publication and posting. And this one was left on here because I had that note out there that may have been a goofy note that said we, that Aaron's lingo, which the lingo that's in there may actually be Aaron's lingo. And I'm, if that's the case, I apologize for, for not being clear, but Aaron, what say you?
I think you're right, Ms. Chairman. That was my, pardon my lingo.
Okay, let me make it big enough so I can read the dang thing.
This may be the area where Ms. Robbins had some comment.
Yep.
Oopsie daisy. Hang on a second, where'd that go? There it is. All right. Okay, Frank?
Well, I apologize to you, Ms. Chairman, and email, I apologize to the committee because some dumped that at me after we had the last discussion. Aaron, question?
Yes.
And this has to have publication, posting of ordinances and other documents. There's a list of ordinances. One time, the newspaper general circulated one in the city and posted on the city's webpage. Then there's this section, a part of this sentence says, "Until such ordinances become codified into the code of ordinances." So here's the question. For instance, are fee ordinances and rezoning ordinances within the list of ordinances that are described in this section? And the answer is yes. Then there's a problem. That's why I apologize, Ms. Chairman. I didn't have caught this many times since I've read it. Therefore, those two kinds and then others are not ever going to get codified. Therefore, they, second question, does that mean they have to be on the webpage forever? Now, I have a fix. But if the answer is yes, they have to be on the webpage forever. You have a list of ordinances. The two examples, fees, fee schedule and rezoning.
Well, folks ought to be able to look up, see what the fee schedule is.
Yeah, but that, this means they have to, okay, that means you're, it means you're going to have a, as we have in the past, in which I've had some difficulty finding out what this code of ordinances language was, you're going to have dozens and dozens of ordinances listed on the webpage.
I think we do already, don't we?
Well, they're both there.
Yeah.
So the, the ordinances as they're passed are listed on the website. They only go back a certain timeframe, but then any ordinance that would require codification, that process is done. Simultaneously is not quite the right word, but in the process of adopting the ordinance, they are also codifying it, and therefore, as soon as it is adopted by council, there's a publication process that happens, and then there's a process of electronic codification, meaning one of our staff goes in and updates the code that you see online to reflect the change in the language that was, as it was adopted by council.
I think Frank's worry is about the, the non-codified ordinance.
Right, right.
But those.
I don't think, for instance, where, if, if the answer to my first question is yes, I don't think we need to post rezoning ordinances on the webpage because that changes the zoning map, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. My fix would be, Ms. Chairman, that at the end of that becomes codified, or 30 days, if not an ordinance that amends the code of ordinances. So you'd leave up the rezoning ordinance and the others for 30 days. And then the issue of where do you put fee schedules? I think it's an internal, in other city documents, like the charter, ought to go in that pile and not as part of the charter. I got another question though, too, before we get through, after we get through with this.
The question, I'm sorry, Aaron, sorry.
Well, the, the fee schedule is codified. We don't charge fees until, one, the fee has been adopted, and two, it's been published, because that's a requirement, and then three, that it's put online, i.e. codified electronically. So.
So it's in the code of, the fee schedule's in the code of ordinances?
Yes, sir. It's Appendix A.
Which chapter?
Um, it's.
Never mind, okay. All right.
And, and that gets modified more than just about anything, but yeah.
I think, I think, I think all the, the, all the other ordinances are, are, are posted online now too, aren't they?
Yes, sir.
The ones that aren't codified.
That's right. If you look under our documents tab from our main webpage, they're all there.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So. Does that, does that resolve your issues, Frank, or does, do you still have some suggested language?
No, I won't argue.
Okay.
I'm not, I don't remember seeing a fee ordinance in the code of ordinances though, but.
It's in there.
That's okay. Here, here's the next question, Aaron, in your language. "A systematic record of all corrections, amendments, revisions, and previous codification of ordinances. What is a previous codification of ordinances?"
So that, um, I think that is meant to reflect the language that existed that may have been amended. You know, as we all know, ordinances get amended on a fairly regular basis, some things do anyway. And so you need to have a record, historical record, and this goes back to what Christina was saying and has, has commented about previously about how to track the changes over time so that we know what laws applied or what ordinances applied at the time that, for example, a development application gets submitted and they, that developer has some level of, the word's escaping me. Essentially, they locked in their, the requirements at the time that they submit their application, because that's what happens.
I can give you another good example that's pretty simple and easy, real easy to understand. All right, when I was judged, as with a lot of Class C misdemeanors, people get tickets, they ignore them, and they disappear, particularly when you're a vacation hub like we are. People come out here, they shoot off fireworks, let's say that, and they did that in 2008. They get a ticket, they never show up for court, they disappear, they leave the county, and we never see them again, except for the fact that we've issued something called a KPS profile, and they, they get picked up by the police department at some point and eventually get brought to court. Well, they're charged with a crime in 2000, a city ordinance violation from 2008. And if we've changed it nine times since then, we need to know what it was at the time they got their, got their ticket. That, I think that's, that's a, because you can't, otherwise it's an ex post facto deal and you have all kinds of problems with that. Frank?
Aaron.
Yes.
Ms. Chairman. To eliminate possible confusion, because right now I'm confused or I don't understand, would it be okay to have this read, amendments, comma, revisions, and ordinances? And eliminate the words "previous codification of"? Because I think, okay, she's nodding her head. So that's.
That would be clear.
And Christine is nodding. Son of a gun.
So you want to change, I'm trying to figure out what section you're talking, the sentence you're talking about is, "The provisions of this section shall not apply to the correction, amendment, revision."
No, it's, it's in the, it's in the red, the red version. In the sentence is, "A systematic record of all corrections, amendments, revisions, and eliminate previous codification of."
Why?
Because I don't know what it is, and I don't think any, I, I would tell you, Rob, if you said previous codifications, I would be looking for the old books that we used to have of previous codifications.
Well, that's fine. I mean, it, we still.
They're not there.
But we have to keep that information, whether it's in a book form or electronic form. Whether it, 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 it doesn't make any difference. You can't, you can't, you can't take, you can't throw away your old codes just because you revised it.
No, but we can't do this because you got to keep all the ordinances, all of them. All of them. Instead of a, a compilation of ordinances which is called, which used to be in pamphlet form and we'll get in it more book form. The code of ordinances is electronic, folks.
That's fine. Ordinances, I mean, I.
Okay, fine.
I have a question. So if I went online and I did my little mini code and I looked up my 2008 fireworks ordinance like the chairman had talked about, would that information still be found?
You have to be able to find it somewhere, whether it's, whether it's online or in a book or.
But currently, is, is that in there, that historical information?
No, it's not online.
Okay, right.
And there's not, folks, it's, wait, Aaron, you, I heard it, I thought I heard it the previous meeting, that the books are gone.
I don't know if the historical books are gone. They may be kept somewhere, but this is a requirement to keep in some form or format, the electronic, whether it's kept in paper form or electronic form, every ordinance that has ever been adopted so that you can trace the history.
Yeah, Rob, let me, let me, pardon me, folks, because I'm going to take some more time. When I have, when I had to do this, what, what the code of ordinances book helped, because I could go back to a date certain with an ordinance date and go, okay, here's where I, I'm going to start. And I would look at every single ordinance that council passed between that time and the time that the issue came up. And that it's all paper, but you can do the same thing online.
So you need to be able to do the same thing online, whether you can or not, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, well said. Yes, sir.
Okay, Christina, your hand was up?
So maybe just saying something like, "A systematic, a systematic record of all corrections, amendments, revisions, and historical ordinances shall be maintained," or something like that.
Well, previous ordinances, I think, covers that. Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm.
Frank, you have a problem with the word codification?
I have, yes, ma'am. Previous ordinances is, I'm fine.
Okay, I'm going to post it over there so everybody can see what we're talking about with the new language. And there we go. Sorry, it's a long one, but.
Only the red stuff was changed, right?
All I did was, was eliminate codification of.
I'm good. So is this a true statement, though?
Well, it better be. That's, that's what they need to do. Otherwise, you know, for the same reasons, both Aaron's example and my example exist, they, it needs to be. Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the corrected language, removing the words "codification of."
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so as it appears in the chart, the chat box at 5:53, from me to everyone. Let's says me to everyone, but on your end, it probably says Rob to everyone. Okay, you got a second? All in favor? You know, okay.
I did have a question about Frank mentioning the rezoning map up for 30 days. Is there a reason why you wanted it up there only for 30 days? Do we have a?
No, no, I just tried to pick a time, 30 days, 60 days. It didn't mean, I just didn't want to have, I didn't think there was a need to have a ton of ordinances on the webpage. Don't want, we're, I'm good. That was all.
Thanks, I was just curious.
Okay. Let's move to.
Oh, wow, hey, the zoning map hadn't updated in a timely manner either, I don't know, but that's.
That ain't, that ain't our problem. For tonight. Okay, let's move on to 401 in regards to the city manager. I think the, all the language was agreed to with the exception of paragraph B. And folks didn't like the executive branch. And I'm not sure where else we, why else we would, why else we bogged down on that one, but.
And my one thing with this is that any new city manager that comes in can like, let people go and hire their own or appoint their own police chief and city secretary?
That happens all the time. It's called house cleaning.
It, it does. You know, and can't sign, no longer the judge. So, but yeah, city managers come in, a lot of times they want their own people. If the council is okay with it, then the council's okay with it. If the councils, you know, they're, they're responsible for keeping the guy online.
Or girl.
Or girl, that's right.
That's okay. Get ready. We're almost there.
Yeah. Yep. But in any case, that's, that is, and if so, yeah, and I, and I don't have a problem changing this executive branch, but I was trying to limit it to appoint, supervise, and give direction to all of the department's offices over which he has authority, we can eliminate the words executive branch, because you know, my, the, I was trying to clarify that, that you know, if he tries to do something over which he doesn't have authority, then the fight can start then, if you if you like, I was trying to make it real clear that there essentially three separate branches. Okay, Gage?
Yeah, Rob, what if, what if, I I struggled a little bit with executive branch myself?
Yeah.
What if, what if we were to change the wording to appoint, supervise, and or give direction to all departments, offices, and agencies of the city? Hang on. Now, wait a minute, I've got to play with my wording a little bit, no, it's not exactly right.
It's a tough one.
But basically, let's, let's let state law and city ordinance dictate who those people are. Who who answers to him?
Yeah. Rob, you're okay with deleting executive branch, correct?
Correct.
But we, you're dead, I believe you are dead right about leaving in over which he has authority.
As 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 specified by state law and city ordinance.
Well, this trumped city ordinances, so, you know, we're, we're I think we want to lay out the, make sure that everybody knows what's, you know, what the deal is in terms of.
Then by, then by state law, this charter and city ordinance.
Let's, but, okay, Christina, you had your hand up?
I didn't, but just maybe over which, which he has authority might be one of those defined terms of what is the authority, where does his authority lay, or her, sorry.
Well, and that's, you know, that's actually, it's because it's the city manager, his authority is is not defined by state law and and things like that, it's defined by the city council in terms of, in terms of his, his authority. So I don't, but I'm fine getting rid of executive branch, that's, let's, let me go ahead and delete that before we move on here.
There's going to be some interpretation of over which he has authority, so folks are going to ask, who is that? And the only one I know of, Rob, is the municipal judge.
I think that's right.
Do do we need to move the placement of over which he has authority to after agencies of the city?
We should also do it over which they have authority, or something like that, you know, not male.
Well, shouldn't say he, you're right. Should be gender neutral.
Yeah, correct, correct, but that, but, but, but it should come after agencies and not before agencies.
I agree, I agree, that's correct.
And do we say, do we say how many city council members have to approve him letting go Danny Smith? Is that something we should state as well? With just a simple yay or nay, not a super majority or anything?
You're going to have to do that under police chief, but not here.
Right, yeah, that would be under police chief, I think.
Okay.
Okay. All right, I'm going to post what I believe we have consensus on as far as the new B, and we'll see if we get a motion. All right, I just sent that on the chat box at 6:03, changed B to appoint, supervise, and or give direction to all departments, offices, and agencies of the city over which the city manager has authority and hire, suspend, or remove any employees of the city except for department heads, which require council approval for employment or removal.
I would move to accept that language.
Okay. Second, all in favor? All right, oh man, we're cooking with gas now, okay.
You need to put a comma after authority, city manager has authority, comma, and?
Uh, I think that would be in, in Oxford, comma.
Never, okay.
But I don't.
Okay.
The Q E D would do it, but I don't, I don't, I don't think we do here. Authority. Or should, hang on a second. The city manager has authority. Yeah, I think, I think that's right. I think that was the only change in that one. All right, let's move on to the next one, which I believe is city secretary. is the city manager going to appoint them or nominate them, and is the city council going to approve? If they nominate, then the city council appoints.
Move to approve is written in the, the change that we got in the.
I'll second that.
Okay, so, let me make sure I'm understanding that, you're moving to, basically, you're saying we got it right last time, the city manager shall appoint a city secretary, or shall nominate a city secretary for appointment by council?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And the second, you agree with that too, right? All right. We've got a motion, and let me, let me just go ahead and post, post that, so we're all clear and the record's real clear. It's the first paragraph of section 4.02.
Is the chat boxes recorded to?
Oh, hell, hang on a second.
Do we, it, this?
This.
Great.
Hang on a second, not that chat box, I screwed it up.
So, Aaron, go to meeting, keeps the chat box?
Yes.
Okay.
Not on the recording, like, you can't watch the video and see the chat box.
Right.
But it does record and, and I get a, like, whoever the organizer is gets a notification, and you get the chat box comments.
Okay.
There is a record.
Thanks.
All righty, the chat box, at the 6:06 PM post, the second 6:06 PM post, excuse me, does that accurately reflect your motion, Mr. Robbins? Was your motion, wasn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, it does, and whoever seconded it, is that your, that's your second, okay? Got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Great, thank you. Okay, here we go. Section 4.03, municipal court. And if I remember, if my notes are correct, the first paragraph was okay, and we all agreed to that, but the 4.03.1 minimum qualifications for a municipal judge, there was objections to that.
I had a note, we were looking at state law on there, too.
Well, that was, that was a proposal, was to look at state law, which sets the bare, which sets the bare minimum for you, your municipal judges, as far as the state, because they're state judges, they, they, they set the laws to what the minimum is, okay? Now, for everybody's edification, I did find, and I have Frank found a bunch of cities where they didn't go into much detail as to, as to qualifications. I found four, and I just looked for a little while this afternoon I can pull those up for you here in just a second, Frank, if you want to tell them the cities that you, that you found, then.
Cedar Park, Round Rock, New Braunfels, Denton, San Marcos, Marlboro Falls, Leander, and Georgetown.
Okay, well, some of those are on my list as well. I gotta find it.
Now, several of them have the judge move into town.
Exactly.
My issue fundamentally is, I think we're narrowing up the choices and the flexibility council has to hire somebody, because our market, I think, for municipal judges is fairly small. And the state qualifications for me, which is given the court of record, and Gage and I've looked at 30, and you've looked at 30, and chapter 30, and Aaron was telling us about chapter 30, and I didn't know there was a chapter 30 court of record, and so I still learn it stuff, but anyway, I think it's all there, I think the state law in chapters 29 and 30 are the minimum standards, and I'm concerned about adding any other standards to include moving into town, which some cities do, because I think it narrows stuff up too much for the council. Well, here it says fairly narrow market for folks that'll do one of the most important jobs in town.
Well, and one of the things that has changed in that, you know, I actually pay them to do it, but, you know, when you didn't pay them to do it, you, you had two guys that still meet the, meet the qualifications plus them, plus live in the city, who you all basically didn't, chose not to reappoint or test, or not to hire, because one of them tried to be the, the associate judge, and council wouldn't, you know, they chose a, they chose a guy with five years' experience over a guy that had, as a lawyer, or a guy that had 30 years' experience as a judge, who did live in town, so, I mean, this is a question of, this is a question of how, how, how easy do you want it to make, make it to outsource your judges, I mean, we get it much, I mean, we've already outsourced them to Round Rock and Lakeway and, and reduced qualifications from where they were, so, I mean, it's just a matter of standards as far as, as far as you want for the city. But, yeah, Christina?
To say that it was limiting our choices of qualified people, I think, is untrue, just because we did have the judges who did live here, and again, were unpaid as well, but also too, I mean, there has been an influx of people, especially since, since they were judges, so, I mean, I think that the, the pool of, of possible candidates that do actually live here has grown exponentially as well.
The other question is, is, and think, when, when it was done for free, it was done as a service to the community. If you're going out to try and hire somebody, and when you say, you know, well, let's lower the standards down to two years, what you're saying is, let's, let's make it so we can go out and hire one of the cheapest guys possible. You know, I, I honestly, I like the aspect of community service involved in this, I like the aspect of community service involved in every office in, in the, in the city. So I, I don't have a problem with the residency requirement, and even lower, I think, you know, if you want to lower the standards, I really don't have a problem with that if you, if you have a residency requirement, because you know, if, if they live here in town, they've got a vested interest in doing a good job. Gage?
Yeah, I, what I'm not sure of is why we need to, to make requirements over and above what state law requires a matter for this charter. In other words, why don't we just give council the right to add requirements over and above state law via ordinance?
Well, I mean, and when we started this whole operation, I've said, look, I'm not into doing mass changes or anything like that, I mean, if it's, if it ain't broke, let's, let's don't fix it. And, and, but if it's an area where we think the city has messed up in the past, then we ought to take a look at fixing it. You know, I believe they did, so, you know, that's, that's, that's the deal, plus there, there is, you know, there's, there's other things, I, you want a judge, and I don't mean any disrespect to Ms. Silvera, but there's an old saying amongst litigators, judges are good for two things, ruling in my favor and being overturned on appeal. Okay, so, you, you, you want a judge that, that I think has the qualifications, and you want a judge that will, that will act independently, you don't want somebody that's got two years' experience that's going to run to, no offense, Aaron, but run to the prosecutor to ask them a bunch of questions every time they get stumped. It's, it's, it takes, it takes some fortitude and some intestinal gumption to be a judge. And I don't, I, I think that, I think that that is something you ought to, ought to consider as well. Christina?
I just want to make clear for the record that no judge has ever asked me for direction or about anything, I just want to make that clear, I'm not worried where your comments coming from, but it has nothing to do with the length of time that someone's operating on the bench or practicing law.
Well, it has, it has to do with their, I think it has to do with their courtroom experience, and whether or not, you, you know, whether or not you are, you, you have the ability to stand up and make an argument to somebody that is, is, that you may think has more experience or even knowledge than you do, but maybe not about this particular subject. Paul, Roberts?
The gentle lady had her hand up before me.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay, thank you, before we did start paying the judges, it was kind of a having, having the city council be here for at least a year, and all of the boards and commissions be here for at least a year, is the same thing that we ask of all of them. That was before we paid these people, so it's not exactly, so it would just be kind of like another advisory board type thing, like a community service for the city, so it, it kind of changed when we definitely started paying people and bringing in outside people, but having them as a legal resident here for at least a year is the same that we do with city council and the boards and the commissions and all of that as well, so.
And I'm, and I'm. And I'm, and I'm, I've got to tell you, I mean, you pay the associate judge 60 bucks an hour for whatever time he, he serves. And so, no lawyer is going to do this, is, well, no, depending on what the lawyer's motivations are, and I don't know what they are, if you're not in the city, to, nobody's, no lawyer's going to do it for 60 bucks an hour without some sort of a community service aspect to it. Unless, unless they need the funds, or I've been, I'm, I'm, I'm a lawyer, I don't work for $60 an hour, I'll just, I'll just leave it at that, unless I'm doing it to help the city or help somebody out. And, you know, the, the presiding judge, I think he gets what, does he get 1,200 bucks a month, Aaron?
I don't know what the judge is paid. I don't pay, I mean, I may have known at one point, but I don't pay attention to that. I will, I will say though, that one of our own residents, who is a former judge here, serves as a municipal judge for multiple cities and is likely paid somewhere in the $6,200 an hour range. So, it happens all the time. It's, that's a pretty common municipal judge.
And I, and I suspect that there's, there's, there's a business plan aspect to that too, in terms of networking and where you're going to find the rest of your business. So, you know, I, and I don't, I have no idea what Lakeway and all those other cities pay, but that's, that's, and that's, that's a, that's a, that's the way he runs his practice. Paul Roberts?
I, I apologize, maybe I'm, I've lost something here, so I'm, I'm trying to multitask a little bit, but we're, we're talking about 4.03.1B, correct?
We're talking about.
Specifically being a legal resident, paragraph B.
We're, we're talking about the whole pair, the whole thing, because
Right, but it seems to me that
A lot of folks don't, don't want the 10 years, a lot of folks don't want the residency. And I don't know about D, nobody's made any comments about that.
So, my, my thoughts on this, that I'll put out there, is, I think, the wider you can make the talent pool, the better. If somebody's willing to commute from wherever they live to work here, great. I personally think it might be helpful to have somebody who doesn't have strong community ties, thus no allegiances, thus a more blind, a truly blind interpretation of the law, like Lady Justice has with the blindfold.
No, and, and I don't mean this, I, I, I mean, I find that pretty offensive, actually, that, that you have to sit, you got to come from another town to be objective.
No, I'm not saying
When there, if you're trying to avoid the appearance of impropriety, there's a whole lot of that that goes on in this town. And I, and, you know, if, if, I can tell you in the four and a half years that I was, that I was the judge, only two people asked me to dismiss a case. Both of them worked for the city, not, they were not, they were not citizens charged with anything.
Right, so my point, you validated my point, is that the, if somebody's working from outside, who's a non-resident of the city, they're less susceptible to those local influences, such as you just cited, where two city people ask you to do that. If they're from outside here, my point is, but the broader point is, the wider the talent pool we can draw from, I think the better. Simple as that.
You could say that about city councilmen as well. You could say that about
No, I don't, I don't know. City councilmen aren't interpreting, aren't passing judgment, it's a whole different, I think you got, I don't think that there's, they're not synonymous with each other. They're not even philosophically, I don't think. But I respectfully disagree with you, but there was no offense intended to you. I was making, the question before us regarding Bravo and Charlie paragraphs here, is do they need to be licensed in the state of Texas for a minimum of 10 years to serve as a municipal judge in our city? And also, do they need to live here for at least one year? I don't think either of those is a necessary prerequisite. I don't think they're hurtful.
But I, I don't, I don't know how you can make the same, the, the, the argument just did, that you want to broaden the talent pool to get the best people if you don't want more than two years' experience. That makes, that, that just doesn't, that doesn't make any sense. If you, if you, if you, if you want to get rid of the residency requirement, then, then, then bump up the experience requirement.
What does everybody else think?
Gage has the hand up? Yeah, I, 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 I want to go back to, to what I was suggesting a minute ago. I think we need to allow ourselves some flexibility. Conditions in our community are changing rapidly. Okay? And the, the, the pool of talent that we have for jobs like municipal judge is a, is a great example for that. And for us to sit here and try and to, to say that we know exactly what it needs to be right now, I, I think is going a little bit too far. I, I, I don't know why it's not a good path to go down to say, look, this person is going to have to have the qualifications that the state requires. And if our city government believes that there are additional requirements that should be added to that, based on the conditions that exist at a certain period of time, we give them that authority to do it through ordinance.
But I, the problem is, is the ordinance is, is the city council.
Yeah, agreed.
You trust them. I did the job.
So do, so do the voters. So do the voters.
Okay. Okay. Well, anybody want to, I'm open.
Christina is, Christina is trying to get your attention.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Christina.
I am wary of, of hiring a judge who has not even been a lawyer for 10 years. I am wary of that.
Okay. And, and I, I just want to make one, one point, and that is, of all the cities that Frank cited, as well as some others, San Marcos and New Braunfels both require residence attorneys.
Yeah.
City, Katy, Katy, Texas also does. And I X, and Lampasus does. Actually, Lampasus says a resident of the city, or it's ETJ, which would, might expand some things. So, you know, I, okay. I mean, I'm looking for some suggested languages, if you wanted
Break them down, A, let's talk about A. How do we feel about A? Let's talk about B. How do we feel about B?
Well, A, A is required, meets all the requirements of the office prescribed by state law. Some people wanted to stop right there. Okay, is that, I mean, that's pretty much where you are, Frank, right? Just stop right there.
That's where, that's where I am, and I think that's where Gage is, and let me just say.
Well, Gage is right here.
I agree with everything Gage just said.
Okay. Okay.
Do we feel like it's okay for them to run for city council while they're a municipal judge?
No. They shouldn't be able to do that.
That's F.
Okay, let's, let's go down the list. A, everybody's fine with A, correct? Thumbs up?
Don't have a choice. Mr. Chairman, it's already written, and you do not have a choice.
I'm just trying to move through this in a logical process. So, okay. B, must be a legal resident of the city for at least one year prior to the date of appointment? Thumbs up or thumbs down?
You want to say, or willing to move here? Or relocation, or something like that?
I would add that. I'd, I mean,
Yeah, that's what some other cities do.
Yep.
Your suggestion?
Which one?
Or relocate, comma, or relocate.
Okay. Or relocate within six months of appointment?
Sure, whatever the city manager, is that six months or whatever? How long?
I don't know how long they have after the job offer's been.
It's in here, I think.
Aaron?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that everybody on this group is, understands that the city judge position is not a full-time position. If you think the city judge is going to be able to move here and have that as their sole source of income for 1,200 bucks or 1,500 bucks a month, you're not going to get anybody to do that for that kind of money.
It's not their sole income, right? Because they can still have clients on the side.
Sure.
Not solicited in the city.
They can't represent those clients in municipal court here. So, they would be moving to the city to, to act as judge here, and then have to commute elsewhere where their primary clientele is. So, that's, that's the scenario you're talking about.
I, I would move to strike B. From this all together, it's, I don't, I think you're really limiting the talent pool from which we have to pull.
I, I agree, Paul.
I got a buddy of mine with his own, with a private law, family law practice, he can't, he puts out job, job ads out, he's got a guy, the, like, one applicant, just like there's, it's a tight, there's a tight labor supply in every job field right now, including attorneys. I've got multiple attorneys, I'll tell you what, they're all slamming in today. My buddy, he's trying to hire somebody, he's getting out-of-state applicants that aren't even licensed in Texas. And municipal judges are no different.
Well, they are different because it's, there's a community service aspect to it.
No, I mean, but they are, you just like to give a private practice, they're all slammed, and, you know, saying, hey, come work with us for 1,200 dollars a month, and by the way, you got to move here. No thanks.
Well, they're probably going to say, no, that, those guys are probably going to say no thanks to 1,200 bucks a month and 60 bucks an hour too, but, okay.
So, number C, we're okay with no minimum requirement, besides what's set by the law?
I don't think 10 years is unreasonable. What does the, the state law prescribe for?
Two.
Two.
Well, Rob, what do you think is, is, you having been this, do you think two years is sufficient? I got the impression that you feel like 10 years is more appropriate.
I think 10 years, and I wrote, and I'll, I'll be open, I owe, I wrote 4.03.1. I thought, I think 10 years is more appropriate. And I also think that two years is, is, is completely insufficient.
I don't think I'd hire a lawyer that had only been a lawyer for two years, like, to represent me.
But aren't these, aren't these matters before the municipal judges in Lago Vista? Are these not just class B and C misdemeanors? Does it go beyond that?
That, that's a big problem, right there, right there. Nobody, you guys don't understand what the municipal court judge does.
Right, that's why I asked.
Okay, the municipal, the municipal court only hears class C fines, okay? But the municipal judge is also a magistrate. When somebody's arrested here in Lago Vista, they're brought to the police station usually, and the, the police call the municipal judge, the municipal judge goes to the unit, this is, this is non-COVID, by the way, because I, I don't know what they did during COVID, but the municipal judge goes to the police station and does what's called a magistration. They read the guy's rights, they talk to him, and they set his bail. And we do that, and they do that here, and the police like to do that here, because otherwise, they take him down to Travis County, and Travis County, I mean, you know, unless you've cut somebody's head off, I mean, the bed, the bail is going to be ridiculously low, because they don't particularly want him in the jail. And so the police like to have the bail set locally. Plus, when you're the local judge, you also can see patterns that happen amongst certain people, because quite frankly, there are certain people that get arrested over and over and over again. And if you see a pattern of their behavior escalating to more violence or more dangerousness, you can, you'll, you'll spot it, and you, and you will set their bail appropriately. Whereas, somebody's going to say, oh, he's charged, he's just charged with this, you know, he's just charged with, you know, disorderly conduct, or, you know, something silly like that, you know, personal recognizance, let him go. But if you've seen him three times in the last month, and you've seen that behavior escalating, you set the bond appropriately. So, the, the police like to have the, the bail set here. And that, so, that is something, if you get arrested here, for any reason, I mean, the local judge, you're going to get magistrateed here probably, unless there's not a, unless there's not a, a, a city judge available, in which case they'll take you down to Travis County. But you, you, so they set your bail, and then every arrest warrant that they write, they bring to the local judge. The local judge signs the arrest warrants, not just for class C misdemeanors. They sign, they sign arrest warrants, I mean, I recall signing two arrest warrants for the same guy for sexual assault in this, in one week, like, three days apart. And, you know, and when you magistrate these people, some, some of them, some of them are crazy. I mean, I, there was a gentleman that basically was arrested pouring gasoline all over his mother's house, getting ready to set it on fire.
Rob, Rob, forgive me for, for interrupting, but I, I, I get the idea of, you're, you've done a good job of giving an idea, and I think everyone else, the other things that the municipal judge does outside of the class C misdemeanors. Can we do a thumbs up on, thumbs up or thumbs down on paragraph C, stay or amend?
I'm a thumbs up.
Can you do this?
Okay, well.
I, I, I feel it, I feel like, you know, a little give and take. I, I, I think getting rid of the one-year residency requirement and keeping the 10 years is a, is a fair trade-off.
I think so too.
I, I, I'm almost where you are, Paul. 10 years just seems like a long time. I'd be okay with five, if we did away with the residency.
How about seven?
Rob?
I, there are, there are approximately, I think there are just under 200,000 lawyers in Texas. There were seven, and so, and there are at least 10 or 11 that live and or practice here in Lago, and all the ones that practice here, I believe, live here. So, it, in terms of your, your, and as a lawyer, hell, I don't, the talent pool thing is, doesn't seem to be, I'm not as concerned about it, because you, you can hardly spit and not hit a lawyer in Texas. I mean, there are, we got lots of them, they're all over the place.
Right, and they, and there's, they, there's enough business that a lot of them can cherry pick it.
Well, sure. With anybody cherry picking, it's not going to do, not going to be a municipal judge for money.
So, can, for, on the timeframe, do you, do you feel like somebody with a tenure of having practiced for five years, having done what you've done, you take a big practice for five years, they could make competent decisions like you did with, compared, relative to somebody who's been doing it for 10 years? Do you think five years is enough time practicing to be able to make competent decisions on the class C misdemeanors and the magistrate's stuff?
I think Aaron's trying to.
Go ahead, Aaron.
Just for context, until we became a court of record, there was no requirement that you be an attorney to be the judge. Anybody could have served. In fact, it's very common that most municipal judges in small towns, where they are not a court of record, are not attorneys.
Really?
And that, that is correct. And before, before, before we started hiring lawyer judges, when I was brought in, I was brought in and told, the main reason they wanted a lawyer judge was because they wanted somebody who could sign a, a, a blood warrant for a DWI. Okay? I was there for four and a half, that was one reason they wanted an attorney judge. I was there four and a half years, nobody ever asked for one, ever. Nobody ever asked for one, ever. So, you know, that really wasn't the deal. And, you know, in terms of being able to tell somebody, look, you know, this isn't the way it's going to go. You're right, you didn't have to have an attorney of record, or an attorney in a court of non-record. But the fact is, the, and I'll tell you, and the police loved that. Because the guys that were being the attorney would come in there and say, what do you want me to do? And they'd say, sign that arrest warrant. Okay, and they'd sign the arrest warrant. Without looking at what needed to be looked at. But go ahead. That's what I mean, is you've got to be able to stand up to these police officers who want an arrest warrant. And they don't write down probable cause. If they screw that, if that gets screwed up, that case is gonna get thrown out, and somebody's gonna go free. Okay? It shouldn't. Or somebody's gonna get arrested. It shouldn't. Okay, Christina?
Wow, I am completely shocked that there was zero lawyer experience for a municipal judge before court of record. That is crazy.
Well, that was what was required. Now, when you had a non-court of record, you had 125 years of legal experience, but from over the last four and a half years, but.
Signing your name on that is.
Okay, Gabe.
Yeah, we really need to move forward. I'm gonna make a motion that we strike item B from the draft for the residency requirement, and that we amend subsection C to read five years instead of 10 years' experience.
Okay, I, now, in there, I also have five years' experience for the associate judges, because I thought that was appropriate, working for somebody that.
I'm okay with that.
Just leaving it, okay?
I'll second Gabe's motion.
Okay. All in favor?
So what are we doing with the rest of it?
I agree, I agree with C and B and C.
Okay, then I think he wants the rest of it as written to stays. That's my understanding.
We can have, we can have further discussion on it, but I wanted to nail those two down so we can move on.
Close it out.
All right, so, so what, everybody hold your hands up again? One, two. Carter's a thumbs up, Paul's a thumbs up. Okay, I'm a no. I think Frank's a no for the opposite reason. Is that correct, Frank?
No, sir, I raised my hand.
Oh, you did? Okay.
Yeah, the group's trying to reach some kind of a compromise.
Yeah, I know.
And I'm okay with the group trying to reach some kind of a compromise, so. I think two is fine. But I'll go with the group on five, so we can move on.
All right.
I see value in D too. I wouldn't want a judge who also is a criminal defense attorney. Who could possibly get. Do you want to tell me more about that, Rob? D?
D? Yes, and I mean, and I, basically, it has two components. You don't want somebody who's a judge who is who is currently practicing criminal defense work because they're liable to have a client that is, you know, they'd have, they're liable to have to recuse themselves because they've got a client that's arrested out here, or they've got a client that wants to hire him for another case. You know, if somebody, a case that's not in their court. And, and fair is fair, I also said they shouldn't be prosecutors either.
I disagree with that, and I think that's an issue the council should be sorting through when they look at the folks that are applying.
Anybody else?
Yeah, Rob.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry.
This is a question for you and Erin, because I don't know. Are there already provisions in the conflict of interest regulations that would preclude something happening like C or D? Like D or E, I'm sorry, D or E?
Well, currently, but, you know, your associate judge in town now is a criminal defense lawyer, his practice is almost exclusively criminal defense. And I don't have, actually, I don't have, I don't have a problem with criminal defense lawyers, per se. I have a great admiration for them. I was one. If you think, they are pretty much the only guys in the legal system that are actually really looking out for your constitutional rights and trying to enforce them. Without them, that would be a big problem. And I don't have a problem if somebody has not practiced criminal law, or if they practiced criminal law for, as a criminal defense lawyer for 20 years, and they just stopped over the last 12 months and said, I'm not gonna do that anymore. I mean, I practiced it for as long as I could afford to, but I found that it was one of those deals that when I quit doing it, I made more money, so I.
But are there, are there currently any kind of regulatory provisions that would preclude the kind of conflicts we're trying to stay away from here?
Well, there's, there's all kinds of conflicts that you you cannot, you should, a judge should recuse himself if he is a, if the client, or if the, if a guy, if a defendant is a client of his. Certainly, but you know, yeah, they should.
Erin, were you gonna add something?
It's not that they should, it's that they must.
Yeah. I mean, it's a rule that they must.
So then why do we need this in our charter?
The what, here's a situation that is not, that is not an ethical problem for somebody in that situation, okay? They're a sitting judge out here. And all judges, all the judges know each other, right? A lot of them do, anyway, because we all go to the same CLA classes and things like that. And if there, if a, if a person who is perhaps a former defendant, who thinks I don't know that there is a ethical preclusion to, to not accept employment from a defendant, from a former defendant. If somebody goes through the system out here, they're adjudicated, you find them guilty, you find them innocent, whatever, then you, then, you know, they get another ticket in Round Rock, and so they hire the local judge to go represent him in Round Rock. I don't know that that's an ethical violation. Honestly, I'd have to, I'd have to go dig through a whole bunch of books to look it up. Christina, I wouldn't do it, just as a matter of appearance, but, but I don't know that it is an actual ethical violation if a judge accepts that, that person is a client, to go represent him in another city after they've been a defendant here.
So we know that D and E are both musts. They must recuse themselves, they must not take clients, they must, all that stuff.
That's what I'm just explaining. There's nothing in D, all it says is if you're a criminal defense attorney, and that's what your primary practice is, then you probably shouldn't, we don't particularly need you as the judge here.
Is there anything, Erin, with state law that says that?
No, there's nothing in state law that says that. State law allows.
Where we're overstating what state law already says, that we can keep out. So we could just say, as proposed, or as provided by state law, and, you know, must have five years' experience.
Yeah, that's not addressed.
Okay, I mean, the five years' experience, I know. Okay, so that is not.
And neither is this.
And not taking on clients in their private practice in which the client is likely to be a potential witness. Is there anything in that with state law?
No, but how are you gonna know who a potential witness is?
Yeah.
I'll tell you what a potential witness is, it's a cop. The municipal judge, I don't think should represent cops.
So what?
Like a council thing, because council can't have legal representation by the city either, right? Is.
Well, now, what I'm saying is, the local judge shouldn't be, shouldn't handle a cop's divorce.
Oh, that, okay.
Shouldn't handle the cop's personal injury case. Shouldn't, because they're very likely to be a witness.
And what about, I mean, if somebody doesn't live here, then they shouldn't have financial arrears to the city, which we already threw out that legal resident, didn't we? We're not requiring them to be a legal resident here.
They could still owe money to the city, they could, they could have not paid a ticket 10 years ago. Yeah.
And then how do you guys feel about hold or seek other elected public office while serving as a municipal judge?
I think that's just consistent with the rest of the charter. Where if you, you gotta get, you gotta step down from one office to run for another.
I don't, personally, I don't think D through G are, I mean, they're more restrictive than statute, but I don't see them as being necessarily problematic.
D and E?
D through G, for that matter.
Yeah, you said D through G.
I mean, D through G are, appear to be more restrictive than statute, but I don't see this more restrictive language as being problematic for the city.
Well, financial arrears is what we ask of all council and board member commissioners.
Is F allowed by state law?
I, I think it probably is. You'd probably.
Be both a municipal judge and hold another public office.
Well, since our municipal judges don't, aren't gonna live in town, you know, this is, this is also saying that while they're municipal judge here, they shouldn't be a city councilman, run for city councilman in Round Rock.
All I'm asking is, is that allowed under state law?
There was, there was a recent change.
Okay.
There's a recent change that, I don't know that that's not allowed. I don't know that that you can't do that.
What change are you referring to, Mr. Chairman?
I was referring to the change, and I don't, I think it, I don't think it passed. There was a discussion about a year and a half ago that said if you, if you're an elected judge in a city, you, you could not be an elected judge in any other town. And that's the other option. We can simply say the judge needs to be elected. Make state law requirements, but it needs to be elected. You can also say that.
Erin, was there something that you said about not paying city council members who worked for the state, or something like that? Would this be kind of something like that too, public office and a municipal judge?
So you can't hold two offices of emolument, meaning get paid. City council members are not paid, unless that changes. So that.
You can be a paid municipal judge in four or five different cities. That's, that isn't a problem. Particularly if they're all appointed. And I think there was a deal that said if you're elected in any of them, that, then you couldn't be a sitting judge in another city, but I think they pulled that. And, you know, that, that, I mean, historically Texans favor elections. I mean, you can elect a judge as well.
Okay, so where are we at?
Okay, where we at now is A is in. B is out. And C was reduced to five years. Paul, Paul has stated he believes D through G are not cumbersome. I don't know if that's a ringing endorsement, or if he thinks it's a good idea, but that's, that's, I think that's where we're at.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion that we approve the language as written for D through G.
I'll second that.
You'll second that? All in favor?
That we approve the language for D through G?
Yes.
Right.
And A.
Okay, all right, and.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry, the vote was five, five-four, any nays? Are you a nay, Frank?
Because it is too encumbering.
Okay. All right.
You know, just a side note, and I think Frank certainly recognizes this, but it goes for everyone. You know, nobody should feel, and I don't think anybody does, but just to be clear, nobody. If you don't like something, folks, you know, vote nay. You know, there's still opportunity at city council, that if you're that passionate about it, make your case through.
Right.
No, 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 Mr. Chairman, if we're gonna talk about that, I'd like to bring that up after we get through.
Well, let's bring it up now, before, in case we need to vote on something else.
Well, if, may I, Mr. Chairman, I respond to Paul's point about make your own case?
Absolutely.
I don't think that's appropriate. I think, I think that the chair ought to take what the committee voted to do.
I see. Okay, well, that's.
I've been in a place where that, Paul, what you described happened, and it doesn't help the council.
You're right. I didn't listen to the context of that. We're charged with coming up with these proposals and amendments and stuff, and I stand corrected. Frank is right. It's up to other people who have issue with what we are proposing to make their cases to the council during public comments. But I do agree, I think it would be inappropriate for us to go and escalate our nay, if you will, to the council outside of this venue. So I stand corrected in that regard.
Okay, thank, thank you both.
I'm stepping away for just one second.
Okay, yeah, do you need a break to feed your kid?
I would love one.
Okay, 15, 20 minutes?
Perfect. Thank you so much, you guys.
Let's reassess for 15 minutes, we're all old, we're all old too, so we can all use break. All right, we'll reconvene at 7:20. All right, we'll reconvene at seven-twenty.
You know, it's pretty, while we're waiting on other people, kind of the, a rather sad thing over the, over the weekend. You know, several of my friends is, I think you guys all know, we live here on, on the Cove here in Cottonwood Hollow. And we were celebrating at each other's houses to some extent. Well, they were, I got, I didn't get around to this situation until late the other night, but. Somebody had drowned outside the Cove and they were apparently, you know. It just sucks, you're, you're trying to have a good time, enjoy the weekend while someone's going through such, a family's going through such unsufferable misery. As the sheriff's department is trying for three days to recover the body and they're using side sonar and stuff. It's terrible. I heard about, it's something, you know, apparently the guy, uh, they anchored up, they were stuck. This is outside of Mickey's place, but just at the, just inside the Cove where the buoys are. And apparently one of the passengers got out this way and they were anchored up in 90 feet of water. Got out to swim down and unhinged the anchor and just never came back up. Then over in, over in Devil's Cove area and Little Devil's Cove. There were two propeller accidents, couple of those pontoon, one incident, pontoon rental boats. Drunk, you know, went over, rammed into another boat. People fell off, got run over, lifeline come in, take them out. It seems like most of the accidents we hear about, you guys, I don't know if y'all can confirm, but it seems like. A disproportionate number of them are people renting boats out of town, Pope. Is that y'all's impression also?
Yeah, I wouldn't be surprised. I, um.
An experience.
I mean, I, I'm a sailor. I've been a sailor for years. I've done a lot of offshore racing and. Things like that, but you know, I don't, I don't know what sort of, of. Testing that they, they do before they'll rent somebody a boat, but whatever it is, it isn't enough because it's. I've even, I've even seen it chartering very big boats down in the Virgin Islands and stuff, which is where I, that's where I go when I charter is. You know, they, they. When I, they ask you to submit a resume, a sailing resume or something like that, which I did and then. You know, like get down there and they get, I remember the guy saying, well, we'll probably give you a chart check out. And I got, we got down there and he looked over the resume and he said, oh, you know, you've done, you know, you, you've raced from Houston to Gal, Houston to Veracruz and. All over the place. Uh, you're probably okay. Let's just, you know, that was it. That was the end of it. We didn't even get on the boat, but. Then they leased a boat to two guys from Boston that I swear they'd never been on a boat before in their lives and. They, but they said, wow, we don't plan on putting the sails up. We're just going to motor around and. And it was, uh, they're a real nice fellows, but man, I wouldn't have rented them a dinghy, much less a 45 foot. You know, $250,000 sailboat. They were spooky. Um, and it's, you see a lot of that, yeah, I think. And that, you know, good thing about sailboats is they don't go that fast. You know, but you get somebody on these motorboats and they'll go 30, 40 miles an hour. Then they're, they are deadly and they get out, get out of control. You know, without.
I think we, I think we've got everyone back, Rob.
Yeah, okay. All right, let's get going. Yeah, I just saw Gage pop on there. Okay. All right, 8.05. This is the, this is the.
We're not finished with, uh, with 4.03.
We aren't?
No. I believe so.
No. Okay. What? I thought we, okay, my.
I think I got that last sentence there.
I thought the, the last sentence was kept with, went in with, when we voted on reducing. C down to five years. This, Gage suggested that it stayed the same. So I, I made an assumption, perhaps we should vote, vote on, I mean, all right, what, what else does anybody want to change on, on 4.03?
Did, did we all agree on all of the language up in the opening paragraph?
No. I thought we did last time.
But I thought there was a question about who appointed the county clerk.
Yeah, sure. Oh, 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 that's right. I thought that we made a change on that. That's. Uh, yeah, I don't think anybody's, uh, some, uh, when I looked, most places had the, the county clerk's gonna. Um, I, I suggested that the judge might appoint them. Um, but it was, it was, uh. So that, but yeah, I, okay. Let's go back up to that. I'm sorry.
Yeah, the reason I ask you is because in, in the, uh, the government code. In section 300009. It says the governing body, which is council shall appoint, I'm sorry, the government, governing body shall by ordinance. Provide for the appointment of a clerk of the municipal courts of record.
Correct, correct. And I.
So why are we doing that in charter instead of by ordinance?
Well, we're not doing it in, but in the charter, in the, uh, what the cut, what the, what the. State law is saying is that when they create a court and they create, and they create a job for the judge that they need. That the city council needs to make an appropriate, make a, a position of a county clerk. Um, as to how, who gets, who appoints the county clerk or whatever, because it, it generally is not done by ordinance here now. They're just hired.
But what, but why, why are we dealing with it in the charter if it says in the state code? That, that the governing body, the council should do that by ordinance.
It doesn't say who to appoint. It just says that they should, they should make, they should make a, uh, read that, if you'll read the language again. It, it says that they, that they will. Hang on, I'll pull it up.
Okay.
This is a first weather alert for everyone. We've got a storm coming in from, that's coming in from my side of the lake right now, headed gull's way. 30 mile an hour wind gusts on my rain gauge. So if you've got your thing to, chairs outside, chairs and stuff. Be mindful.
Okay. It says that the governing body shall by ordinance provide for the appointment of a clerk. It doesn't say, doesn't say that they will appoint the clerk. It just says provide by ordinance to provide for the appointment of a clerk.
Right. So, so what I'm saying is why are we even dealing in the charter with the nomination and appointment of the clerk?
Well, it doesn't say who, who appoints the clerk.
It says, it says that the city, the, the governing body should do that by ordinance.
That, that I think is, is a mischaracterization of what it says. It says she'll provide for the appointment of a clerk.
Right.
Okay. It, which means there's an ordinance that says either council appoints the clerk, the city manager appoints the clerk. Or the, or the judge appoints the clerk.
Agreed. So why are we in, in this language saying that, that either the county judge or the, I'm at the county. Uh, I'm sorry, the city manager or the municipal judge should make the nomination. And approval by council. All that, that procedure should be dictated by ordinance, shouldn't it?
Well, it should. Yeah.
So why?
Do we, I mean, in terms of giving us some guidance? Do we?
Do we remove it?
So why not just remove that language from the charter and the city needs to do that by means of ordinance? That's what the state law, that's how I'm reading the state law says it's supposed to happen. I, and maybe I'm misinterpreting it. You know, Aaron and I. Would appreciate your feedback on that if, if I'm missing the vote.
Would deputies be the same boat as court clerk?
Yeah, deputy clerks are same.
Gage, Mr. Chairman, can I? Say something to Mr.? In the research of the nine cities, none of them have the judge appointing. All of them describe who would appoint. The county, the, the municipal clerk. Uh, or her deputies or her, his or her deputies. So who appoints? Is in city charters. None of them that I looked at have that appointment by the municipal judge.
One of the ones.
Most of them are city managers. Some of them, and I'm okay with this one. Are nominated by the city manager and approved by, by the city council. In short, I think age is on a great point. But it gets me off into a little bit of a rabbit warrant. I don't know what the city's ordinance looks like. They created the court of record, Aaron. And that's where this stuff should have been laid out. I don't know if that's there. You're, you're nodding your head as to say, we got some work to do.
No, it's in there.
So who, who, by, by ordinance, who's? Now the words, this is Gage's point. So by ordinance, what, what happened to the clerks?
And, and Gage, the, the language that I had put, that I had put in the, um. The test language here where you'll notice I said, a court clerk and such deputies as deemed necessary by city council. So I was trying to provide for the city council to detect, to determine how many there were going to be because they're the ones that have to pay for them. And then, but I, I said that they were appointed by the judge because that's, that's who they do the bulk of their. Well, all of the, all of the clerk work is done for the judge.
New Braunfels has the, a city secretary ex officio to municipal court.
And it was, and I did find one city where the judge actually appointed the, the city, the, the city, uh, the clerk. But it, I only saw it in one place. That's true. I was just, I, just from a management practice, you know, we, we look at large, you know, if we're looking at large talent pools and management practices. You know, it'd be, it'd be nice to have the person that's supposed to carry out your, your. Standing orders and administration of the court hired by the guy that administers the court and writes the orders. Or girl, excuse me, guy or girl, whoever the judge is. That's what we need. It's time for a lady judge.
If, if we're going to. Do this in the charter, which I still am not sure is the right way to do it. I, I would also lean toward. Leaving the language like it is with the city manager. Doing the nominating to council. And the, the reason, the reason for that is I, I understand the, the independence that we're seeking for the municipal court. And in the application of the law, I'm absolutely on board with that, but I don't know. That all of the other nuts and bolts administrative duties that don't have to do with the actual application of the law. Are, are the right thing for the municipal judge to be overseeing as opposed to somebody who skilled in organizational management. Like the city manager is. Um, and in fact, in the, in the code. It also talks about that a little bit under the responsibilities, the municipal judge, it has. Supervise and control the operation and clerical functions of the administrative department of each court, including the court's personnel. During the proceedings of the court. But there's a, there's a lot of stuff the court does, that the clerk does that are outside of court proceedings.
I, I think anything that the court, that the clerk does in relation to the court is considered within the proceedings. It's not just the, the four, six hours a month that you got, that you have courtroom full of people.
I, I don't know that I'm with you on that one, Rob. Or it would have stood something like court operations or.
That, it's, it's the legislature. They, they might, they might not. I mean, you and I talked about one where they, it appeared they contradicted themselves that in the next line. So, I mean, but. The, the, the court clerk is charged with. Following with, with. With administering the court in the manner set by the judge, whether it's in court. Or whether it's taking window fines, whether it's. Passing out, you know, passing out a, a application for deferred adjudication, if what, any. If it has to do with the prosecution of that person or the. Any, if it has to do with the prosecution of that person or the, the administration of justice of that person, it is a court proceeding.
I, I, I don't necessarily, I, I don't agree that that's how the code is written though. Although Christina was trying to get a word in.
Yeah, Christina.
So I'm just trying to see what you're getting at, Gage. Are you wanting to have this sentence removed, a court clerk and such deputies as deemed necessary, whatever the changes were, that whole sentence taken out?
Uh, hang on.
No, I think, I think he's just saying that it says, I, I think he wants to say, a court clerk and such deputies deemed necessary by the city council shall be appointed by the city manager.
Which is, yeah. Is that how it currently reads?
Well, it doesn't have deemed necessary by the city council, it just says necessary.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, actually, my preferred language is that we just say that the city council shall appoint a, a city clerk or a court clerk in compliance with existing state law. And then, then the details of that are left up to the council approving by ordinance. Which is also what the, the code says, the manner it needs to happen.
And so court clerk as such, and such deputies is deemed necessary by city council shall be appointed by the city council. You want somebody to nominate him or you just?
In, in, in compliance with prevailing state law.
I, I don't have, I don't have a big problem with that.
Who's gonna nominate? The state law, Rob, as you pointed out though, the state law does not define who nominates.
Yeah, the council would decide that in this case, Frank, by ordinance.
No, I agree with you, but the point, the point I'm making is that somebody's gotta bring it to the council, and I think that's in every charter I've read says who nominates.
And, and I would be good with that, I'm just struggling with the fact that, that the code says it all has to be done by ordinance. And, and maybe I'm splitting hairs on that. I just want to be sure however we do it.
Gage, I agree with your point in the way you say that is the clerk will be appointed, you could say in accordance with state law. Well, what, and that's your point. One looks at the state law, and I think, Aaron, that means they'd have to put that in an ordinance. They'd have to decide that and put it in an ordinance, correct? So that, so if you say who nominates, or say according to state law, you end up in the same place and I'm good with that.
Look, I think Aaron was looking for what we already got under this new, under the new court of record ordinance. And I was anxiously awaiting to hear what we got.
Yeah, so I pulled up the ordinance. I put in the chat box what it says about the clerk. So, so you can see that I can send the entirety of the ordinance to you, or you can grab it off of the city's website. It's, if you go to, and it's, if you go to, the ordinance is adopted, under the document center, the ordinance is adopted in 2020, this was the last ordinance adopted for 2020. So 2020 dash 12 dash 17 dash 02, you can pull up a copy of that ordinance. Tonight's discussion has reminded me that I need to have Lynn, the person who does all of our incorporation of ordinances into the code, because our actual code of ordinances has, has a section regarding municipal court. And it has not been updated to reflect this adoption of this ordinance. So it needs to do that. But depending on where, where you guys land and where our voters land, it would be, you know, it may have to be amended again because the charter would trump an ordinance. If you determine and the voters determine and the city council determines that that's the appropriate approach. So just keep in mind, anything that changes in the charter that impacts an existing ordinance, well, we're gonna have to go back and do cleanup to the ordinances. But the ordinance adopted regarding the municipal court of record is available online and it does address appointment of your judge and your court clerk. We will amend that depending on what happens in November.
Yeah. I think Gage's point is that the, the statute says that the count, in, in his mind is that the, the, the council is the one that needs to appoint a clerk by ordinance, is that?
The procedure, the procedure for appointing the clerk. They shall provide for the appointment of, yeah, they need to establish the procedure for appointing the clerk.
Right.
By ordinance.
Okay, so it would read something like this, clerk and such deputies as deemed necessary by city councils shall be appointed in accordance with state law and city ordinance. There's, as, as Rob's working on this, there's an interesting aspect to this in which we've, I've learned that about chapter 30, which is court of record, didn't know that was there. The city council could decide not to be a court of record. And if our charter is approved, it's gonna be more strict, way more strict than, than just a straight municipal court. So we don't always have to be a court of record. However, I don't think what we're doing is not a bad thing for just a straight municipal court either.
Yeah, I, I think it fits either way.
Yeah.
Okay, but the council shall be appointed. Okay, so it shall be appointed pursuant to city, the city, city ordinance and state. Well, I don't know, you need to say and state law because y'all have, you gotta be within state law anyway. If you, what was your, what was your language again, Frank, that you?
I'm okay with that, this, you engage, I just, I'm, I'm okay with what you said. We have a lot of places in our charter that's saying in accordance with state law, so. But I'm okay with what you just read. This is a deal for Gage.
Yeah, I, I, I'd feel better if we went ahead and added the phrase in state law. It takes any question out of it, and we do it all the way through the rest of the document anyway.
Okay. All right. Let me see. A court clerk and such deputies as deemed necessary by the city council shall be appointed pursuant to city ordinance and state law. Does that work?
That works for me, and the rest of the group?
Does want me to stick it in the chat box so everybody can see it? Okay, it's in the chat box, should be. Yeah, there it is.
Moved or proved is written.
I'll second, I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
I. I'll go ahead and accept it. Unanimous.
Sorry about that.
All right. All right. And that is all of them except for the one that Frank you had brought up, wait a minute, that's not all of them.
I got four other issues, whatever, but.
Well, oh, there we go. Section 805, city council action on the budget.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I don't have a recorded vote on the associate judge language. Was there consensus on that that should read as written?
Uh, I, I believe so, yes. Let's go ahead and somebody make a motion and let's vote on it.
I'll make a motion to accept it as written.
Motion. Them except C, but now they're both five years, right?
Christina, all we're talking about is the very last part that starts with associate judges.
Sure, must meet all the above qualify, all the above qualifications except C, but now they're both five years, right?
That's right, we can strike that.
We can strike that.
We can.
What a period right there.
Above qualifications, period?
Yep.
Okay, perfect.
Okay. I move that the last paragraph now reads, associate judges must meet all the above qualifications, period. Do we have second?
Second.
All in favor? Hi. That's a five to one, Aaron. Same as on the other. All, all opposed, Frank, are you opposed?
Yes.
Okay. That's sorry, I didn't mean to assume that you were, but I figured you were. Okay. Where are we, 805? Eight oh five, that's the, and that's the preservation of the of the reserve funds discussion. Gage.
Rob, I believe that was, that was my remark, my suggestion. And I still believe it's a good direction to go, but there's a, a much deeper and, and complicated discussion to take place around that. So for the time being, I'm gonna withdraw that recommendation.
Okay, and the, and the wording would, would stay as is?
Correct.
Okay. I think it's a really good idea too, to try to preserve that reserve fund. But I do understand that it also comes with fraught with other issues. Okay, do I have a motion to, somebody wanna make a motion on that to leave that paragraph as the same?
I'll make a motion to keep it the same.
Second.
Second. All in favor? All right, it stays the same.
I remember we were gonna come back to the certificates, bonds and other financial obligations.
Yes. Yeah, I gotta, I gotta explain that.
What section was that, Christina?
Eight point 10, but there's also.
Yeah, Christina, where I think we're gonna have to look at several sections.
Exactly.
I've discovered since the last meeting.
Cause I'm sorry, what was, what happened since the last meeting, Frank?
Well, I found some stuff, but when, when we get to it, I'll lay it out.
Okay, cause the last, the last meeting, we had, we had actually liked, I think we voted on it, but we can look at it again. Section eight 10 and all, and we changed it to two readings only. And under D, we put it on the city's website, and then we went to F, but I think there was another section that we were trying to deal with that affected this one. And it was, was it eight 11? No, it's eight 12, I believe.
Yeah.
Right. And I'm sorry I didn't break these out separately, but when, but since it was, fixing one might require a fix of the other. Just didn't seem, it was, it was too hard. I couldn't, couldn't, couldn't make it work in my brain, so, okay. But I think it was eight 12 that was causing the anxiety about eight 10. And Frank, you, go ahead.
In the research that I did since the last meeting about bonds to see how many, and cause one of the issues Gage raised was that we ought to vote for revenue bonds. Okay?
Right.
And so we say we're gonna look at some other cities. I looked at the nine cities I mentioned before, none of them do it. So I'm okay with the city having the ability to use the financing systems that the state lays out for us. And I don't think we need to restrict that. That's A. However, here's an interesting issue that I discovered. I, and we talked about this at the last meeting. When you're looking at eight 12, it talks about some things that only have to do with one kind of bond. And I found this out because I looked at other cities and they have this, almost the same language that we do. But it only has to do with revenue bonds. And so the, the fix, and we'll, we'll debate the, whether you vote on it or not, but the, it should be the issuance of revenue bonds, period. Because that Senate, that section doesn't have to do with GOs, with general obligation bonds. When you look at eight 13, the title of eight 13 is compliance with state law. Looking at other cities, almost verbatim, that has to do with general obligation bonds. So you just change the title.
Change which title?
Those, those two sections, yeah.
Well. Oh, all general obligation bonds gotta be voted on, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
No, GOs have to be voted on.
Right, and, and.
Yes, have to be voted on, but COs do not.
Right.
Right.
COs are not GOs.
Right. Right.
Well, exactly.
Okay, but, and 813 is only.
None of these hit COs.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah. I think should have something written in here about COs. Because that's, that's what got Lago in a bad place. And Newsworthy and all these other things.
I don't know what, I don't, that you're going to have to help me on that one.
Well, we bought two golf courses on COs, we bought a mansion on COs. These are non-voting obligations that, that no citizen here had a say in, besides the city council.
Okay, well, no, no, that goes back to what we should vote on. I understand, yeah.
So I think that something about COs should be in here somewhere. And I understand, like, you know, a barge goes down and it needs to be repaired, or, you know, a light or something like that, you know, for safety. But, I mean, we already had Cedar Bray. I mean, it, it wasn't, it wasn't absolutely and totally crucial for us to do it. And I think that's a perfect example of something that should have gone before the voters.
The background I read on, on COs is exactly what you're saying, Christina, was that they were instituted to deal with emergency situations. And now, now their use has just exploded to, to mostly non-emergency situations. You know, I, I am, I'm a big believer in the, especially when it comes to assuming a significant debt for the city, that the voters should have some input on that. You know, that's why I would like to see, quite frankly, revenue bonds require voter approval, too, because the only basis for a revenue bond saying it's self-liquidating are financial projections. No one really knows if the revenue's going to come in to cover that bond obligation.
I take exception to that, Gage. When you say nobody really knows, what you're saying is that there's never any financial analysis of whether they're going to work or not.
No, that's not what, that's, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is there's no, there's no guarantee that financial analysis is correct.
I don't, I don't think he's strong.
Yeah, and how will the voters know that it's not correct?
Well, the, the, no, all you're telling the voters is, we want to borrow this money. We think we're going to pay it off based on these financial. But the fact is, we are going to be absorbing that debt obligation. And we, and, and we hope we've got estimates that say we're going to get revenue to cover it, but it is a risk.
And Cedar Breaks was another CO. And we spent $6 million on that, and then turned around and spent another $2 million.
Yeah, a bunch of that was cash, Christina, you know that.
Hey, hang on.
Cash.
Christina, hold on. I mean, we're not, right now, we're just talking about revenue bonds. Let's stick to one bond at a time, because.
But I was also saying that there is nothing in here about COs.
I agree, I agree.
Maybe we should broaden it a little bit or something.
Well, if we're going to broaden it, we should have broadened it before today, because this is, this is effectively our last meeting on any of this stuff. So, which is why I keep asking for proposed language on things. Okay. So Frank, you believe we can fix 8.12 just by changing, changing the title to issuance of revenue, revenue bonds? And.
I think that should be, yes, sir. And, and then you've got a, you've got a, you know, the, the farm thing was fixed earlier, but yes, sir, I think.
Yeah.
You know, that's what that section has to do with. And 12, well, we'll stay on revenue. Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's, okay.
That's, that's, that's like a no-brainer kind of fix or non-substantive fix.
Well, maybe so, but, but if, if we, if Gage, if we follow Gage's plan and, and want somebody to, want them to actually vote on it, then, then it might require a little more.
Oh, no, no, I agree with that. Yeah.
Okay.
That's just.
But yeah, that, and.
Non-substantive title change.
Gotcha, okay.
Why, why, why would we not want voter approval on a revenue bond?
What? Gage. Yeah, this, you and I've already, guys, Gage and I have had some emails and had some brief conversations. I'm not going to change your mind or anybody else's mind, like Christine, and that's okay, as to what you need voter approval for. But the issue I, the point I made to you last time was if we wanted to float $4 or $5 million of bonds for roads, that might fail. Secondly, this, I think the state law lays out what are, what are, how you're supposed to finance stuff and how, and how we're supposed to go about it. And I'm okay with the tools that the state law has given us. Three, if the council wants to have a vote, they can, period. That's their, that's their call. Or they, they float a bond, they have a bond and put a whole bunch of stuff together, and Christina, I'm there with you on this one. But it's, it's a long story. I would go for a long list of capital improvements and have folks figure out which ones we want to do and which ones we don't. But that bond's going to be more than 10 million, so it has to be a CO. Because some of, some of the stuff you're talking about might not hunt. But the way to, the council has the choice to, to deal with it. That's all I'm saying. Yet I don't think you need to change or more constrain, but that's it.
What, and I apologize, Frank, if I'm hearing this wrong.
Okay.
But it, 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 it sounds like you're saying we don't want people to vote on revenue bonds, because if you leave it up to the electorate, they might be too dumb to not vote for them.
I, Rob, you son of a gun. I didn't say. But like I said before, I'm not going to change anybody's mind on this, so go for it, guys.
No.
But I sure as heck didn't say that.
I know, I'm paraphrasing. I know I'm.
Oh, no, you didn't.
Okay. All right. So anyway, all right, how, Gage, do you have a suggestion as to how we implement that? Terms of.
A vote by council. This will be just like the golf courses and the legal slash mansion. Those were all in executive session, so there wasn't any, you know, public knowledge or, or a no, I mean, they had no.
Christina, Aaron, I'm not sure that all of the lists that Christine has given us is, were COs, but I get your point, Christine, I get your point. Whether the list is, but I catch your point.
Well, I, honestly, I, I don't, I don't, other than to ask whether it's legal or not, I don't know why any of these bond obligations or debt, you know, debt obligations would be discussed in, only in executive session, or discussed at all in executive session, I wouldn't.
That was real estate and legal, so those, and, I mean, that's.
I, I understand.
No, they were voted on in open meeting.
Well, yeah, but.
You can't make a decision on that stuff in exec, so that's a discussion, Christina, you're right. The long discussion was in exec, but we vote in open.
Right, you can't, everybody comes out and they all throw up, they all say, yeah, so nobody knows what happened or what the discussion was, or why. So I, I'm, I'm, you know, that, that, I know, I've seen that as well.
I mean, the only change I would recommend, Rob, is, is that in the section under issuance of revenue bonds.
Yep.
That we add, that we add a provision for voter approval.
Okay. So let me see if I can come up with something here real quick. The only thing, here's, and I, I don't, I wrote it, but I don't like it. Let's put it that way. Subject to voter approval, comma, the council shall have the, the authority provide for the terms in form of any purchase agreement, contract, mortgage, bond document desired for the issuance of revenue bonds in the acquisition and operation of any such property or interest.
I'm, I'm okay with that.
It's one of those things where I wrote it and I, I don't, I don't feel like it's very artfully stated, but it's the best I can do in two minutes. Subject to. I'm, I'm going to stick it out there.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
It's the last, it is the last, a new last sentence. Well, an amendment to the last sentence. And I've just posted it. And on my, on mine, the, the capital T for the has been struck, struck out, but when I copy and paste here, it didn't stick, didn't do it. And that first FOML, F O M L, is also struck out. But I'd have to approve those, prove those to make it look right. Is that, that's, there we go. I can, I can fix it.
Rob, does it go at the beginning of that sentence or the beginning of the first sentence of the paragraph?
The last sentence, right?
Well, it looks, to, to me, it looks like the last sentence deals with the nuts and bolts of what makes up the debt. But the first sentence is what gives them the authority to create the debt. I, I may be misreading that.
No, good point, that's totally true.
Okay, so maybe it should say, the city shall have the power to borrow money subject to voter approval for the purposes of constructing, purchasing, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, that, that's what I would suggest.
Okay. All right, I, I like that better myself. Like I said.
And while he's working that out, I'll just jump right in again and say we may be the only city in the state that does that.
Cool. That's all right, I think, I think up until about a year and a half ago, you were the only, we were about, I think we were the only city in the state that didn't pay its judges, too, so.
No.
I, I, I never, I never saw, I never met another one that wasn't.
Are you going to put that in the chat box?
Yeah, I'm trying to here, subject. Okay, the new, new and improved first sentence is about to go in the chat box. Let me see if that screws anything else up in the sentence, in the paragraph. You know, with that, I, I have a problem with this, with the second sentence, second sentence. It's such bonds when issued shall be charged upon and payable solely from the properties acquired or interest therein and the income therefrom, and shall never be a debt of the city. I just don't think that's a true statement.
It's true for revenue bonds, Rob, that's the point I'm making.
That may be the intent of revenue bonds, but if you, if you, if you issue that bond, the bond is subject to payment, being paid back the way it's, however it's worded in the, in the bond, it's not necessarily. You know, if you issue a bond, that's a 10% bond and, or a 3% bond, or. Well, these days, what is it, 3%, 2 and 1/2%? But, you know, then there, it's, it's, that's a debt, that's an obligation of the city. No matter what you call it. And since then, to say it isn't, I, I just, I just think that that.
Rob, yeah, and then Aaron's going to have to jump in, and we don't have a bond council here. That, my point earlier was that I didn't real, I always wondered about that statement. I could never figure out, why did they say that? That's certainly, anyway, but when I did the research, that applies only to revenue bonds. That's the state law, that's what other cities say. So that the, the debt of the city means the, the general fund. Now, that's a term of art, Aaron, you, you tell me what the debt of the city, to me, that's a term of art. And it's saying, what's going to cut, what's going to cover this is the city's revenue. Now, now I'm going to complicate stuff. If the city decided to move general obligation money to a utility account to pay for bonds, could that be done?
I'd want to, I'd want bond counsel to answer that, I have.
That's my point, thank you. And, and Rob, your point is well-taken. All of that stuff's laid out in the documents. All, all I'm saying is not knowing that, what that term of art necessarily means, that's what all the other cities are saying.
Yeah, because the, the primary difference between GO and, and revenue bonds is that GO bonds are paid from taxes, revenue bonds are not payable from taxes. That's.
So Aaron, what happens in a revenue bond if the actual revenue does not become adequate to service the debt?
They have to, so, so revenue can come from multiple sources, and they have to make adjustments to those revenue sources to accommodate that. For existing, for example, fees, rates have to be adjusted to accommodate and to take care of the, the needs of the, of the bonds, the payments.
That's, if I may, that, that's one of the reasons investors like municipal debt is because there's a high level of certainty, it'll get paid back. To Aaron's point, they, if it's not, if it's, if it's not the kind of bond where you can just raise sales taxes, for example, well, then in this instance, you would raise water rates.
Right.
Increase fees permitting, and it's going to get paid back. They have to pay it back, or they default, and they'll never borrow money again.
But, but let, let's say, Paul, that it was, it was financing another amenity that was tied to user fees as this revenue source, and you just didn't get enough users. I mean, you can, you can say that you could raise the, the individual fee rates at that particular amenity, but that's, could potentially drive the number of users down again. There, there's no assurance.
But not simply has monopoly on that, on that amenity, such as water.
Well, I mean, water, wa, water is, water is, is the, I agree with you, because people have gotta use water.
And they can't take wells along with this too.
But water isn't the only type of improvement that's covered by, by a revenue bond. It could be any kind of city amenity that.
Yeah. Recreational facilities?
No.
It's gonna, it could be utilities, recreational facilities, or facilities for any other self-liquidating municipal function.
Right.
I mean, you know, essentially, it's, it's essentially, it's, it's borrowing money to either go into business or to do a business-like venture that you, that you think is gonna pay it back.
I'll give you an example. Let's say we, that we thought we could get a lot of conference business here in Lago, and so against that, we ran projections, and the projections estimated that, yeah, you're gonna have enough people using this conference center to pay for it. But the business doesn't come after we build the facility. So how do we service that debt?
You can't raise money on, on, on a business where nobody's coming, is what you're saying.
Yeah.
Exactly. What you're, what you're describing is that, that, that the city, this, the city council looks at that, and somehow, for a business that's never been here, for which there is no data, they would still sell revenue bonds, and they're gonna go to New York, or the bond council, and our financial advisors are gonna go to New York and try to sell those bonds, and you're gonna have a huge rate when there's no basis effectively to sell it. Let me just say that bonds don't get sold until they get rated in New York, and our city has got a really nice bond rating, and we haven't screwed up yet, and I don't know of a single city that's defaulted on a revenue bond anywhere. That may happen. But I don't know of one. By the way, most cities don't do revenue bonds, because they, they come, I mean, your concern is not out of whack, and that's why revenue bonds have a higher rate than COs and GOs that are general revenue, a, a better source, a, a more predictable source, given weather, than revenue bonds that might be based on water use. That's why they have a higher rate.
Rob, we probably, I, I think we've discussed this one. We probably need to get to a vote.
And Aaron, Aaron has posted something that says revenue bonds are not considered debts under the Texas Constitution.
Okay.
Which, whatever that means, although the city is required to pay them back. I don't know, I don't know why it's not a debt, but that's what the Supreme said. Or the appellate court, so.
Look at the Texas Constitution, Article 11, Section 5, and it discusses amendment of charters, taxes, debt, and debt restrictions. That's the clause where the court has weighed in that revenue bonds are not considered debt. So it's, it's a court that made that decision based on the language of the Texas Constitution.
I, and I, and I get it. It could be one of those things that is a, is a, is a decision and a designation that doesn't really have much much weight, because the city owes the money.
It is an obligation.
It is an obligation, whether you call it a debt or a account payable, or a.
Liability.
Whatever. Well, okay. I believe you.
Well, let, let's, let's go ahead and get this to a vote and move on.
Post that up there before all that got done. "City shall have the power to borrow money, comma, subject to voter approval, comma, for the purpose of construction, purchasing, improving, extending, or repairing public utilities, recreational facilities, facilities for any other liquidating, self-liquidating municipal function, not now or here and after, prohibited by state law, and to issue revenue bonds to evidence the obligation thereby created." Do I have a motion?
I have a question.
Okay.
Um, so now, why are we taking GO bonds out of this and just having revenue bonds?
Because it's only talking about revenue bonds.
That's all the section is talking about.
It's talking about GOs too. I mean, we, we borrow GO money to.
Only in the title. If, when you, when you look at the, the whole language of the paragraph, it's clearly only referring to revenue bonds. Although, I bet I agree with you, Christine. I, I would like to see more voter approval on things like that.
The general obligation bonds are all voted on anyway, aren't they, Aaron? Yeah. Aaron, turn your hand up.
Yes, sir.
I could only see the tips of your fingers, so.
Yeah, sorry. Oh, I, I I think that you wanna be careful with the language that you've proposed, because it could be construed to require voter approval for any borrowing of money. And that, I don't know, is your intent, unless it is. If it's your intent that voters have to approve the city's borrowing of any money whatsoever, I think, here's your language. So if that's not your intent, I would ask you to scrutinize it closer.
Well, I don't know that that was the intent, but if that is the, if that's what, that's what happens, I think that's what makes Gage happy.
I, I think it's only, it's only talking about self-liquidating functions, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yes.
I will, I will make sure that, because I don't wanna go way beyond what we're talking about. Are you okay with that, Aaron? Is that? Oh, you're muted.
Okay, so it, it's, you have the power to borrow money, subject to voter approval, for the purpose of constructing, purchasing, improving, extending, or repairing public utilities, recreational facilities, or for, or facilities for any other self-liquidating municipal function. So.
Yeah, the buzzword, the problem is "or."
Yeah, it, it's a "or."
So if it, if it read "and", if it said "and," that would get the specificity we need?
How about if it says "or any other facilities for?"
It, it would limit you, I, I think it could be construed to mean that you have to have voter approval to, to borrow money if you're gonna purchase, improve, or extend any public utilities or any recreational facilities. If that's your, if that's your intent, is that you want voter approval to borrow money for any of these things, then that's what your language, that's how your language would be construed.
How, how, how about this, "subject to voter approval" "for any self-liquidating municipal function", including, we can even say including, but not limited to, "construction, purchasing, improving, extending, or repairing public utilities, rec facilities", or other, other facilities that are. Pardon my French. I was close there for a second. Anybody have any suggestions?
Oh, hang on. Did you post it, Rob, or are you still?
I haven't posted it. I, I'm, I'm still trying to come up with something, because I think, I think what I, I think Aaron's point is a good one, and it, because these, no matter what these things are, they have to be self-liquidating municipal functions. I don't know that adding word "and". So my, my thought was to move the self-liquidating municipal function not.
Right.
Let me move it here for the purpose.
So, what, revenue bonds are gonna pay, gonna be funded by money that comes in from whatever it is you're buying, right? Whatever is, whatever it is you're selling. A self-liquidating fund doesn't necessarily, a revenue bond can be a longer-term bond. Self-liquidating bonds are typically short-term things, so they're, they're, you know, mini-me's, essentially, a horrible analogy, but um, they're cousins or they're relatives. It's the baby brother of the revenue bond. The revenue bond has a sinking fund. Um, you know, your self-liquidating funds are, are.
This is the revenue bond, would, would.
Right, so what I'm trying to say is, not all revenue bonds are self-liquidating.
Okay.
There, it, it's, a self-liquidating fund is only gonna be a portion, because it's a short-term mechanism that pays for itself.
Yo. Okay.
Revenue, an example of like a revenue bond is like a toll road. It's generating revenue. Um, it's, that's why we, you know, we bought it to put in a toll road. It's gonna make up its own revenue, and that's how we're paying.
Right, maybe a long-term thing. A, a self-liquidating usually is only to, to kind of finding it's short-term.
Well, maybe that "or" should be changed to an "and." Would that cover it? Based on that explanation?
Well, that would get back to what Aaron was saying, wouldn't it, that we're talking about any kind of, yeah. You know, let me just ask the question, because, you know, we've gotta come to agreement on the concept before, before the wording is gonna matter.
True.
What kind of lim, what kind of limitations do you feel like the city should have in terms of accumulating? I'll use the term obligation, because apparently there's a legal definition for debt. I wanna talk in general about a financial obligation. How much discretion should the council have in, in absorbing and accumulating financial obligations without voter approval?
I think things like parks should require voter approval. Land for the public use, such as a park, that should require voter approval.
I like your greater expansion of obligations, rather than just this one kind of bond, the revenue. I like it that you're thinking more bigger than just revenue. Also, the obligation.
I mean, I think, that's, that's what we have to come to agreement on, is just, you know, where are the limitations on what council can do without the voter stepping in and saying, "Wait a minute, you know, we wanna have a say-so in this."
Yeah, I'm looking at a Texas policy foundation. Right, they wrote up something about certificates of obligation, and even on here, it says tighter use restrictions. Because debt issuance are not approved by voters, voters, the kind of capital improvement projects eligible to be funded with COs should be more tightly defined. So I think, I mean.
Well, that's a whole new paragraph, and I don't, actually don't think COs are mentioned in the charter anywhere. Are they, Heinz?
Well, obligation.
I don't think so.
Debt, city debt that we're.
I mean, Frank raises an interesting point. Should we just leave it up to the bond markets to figure out whether we're getting it over our heads or not?
That's, Gage, I didn't say that. Look, let me, let me try to, the cities, to include Lago, go through a major exercise that a lot of people know they're going through about debt, and the first issues that the city council and the community, generally speaking, pretty much know about it, or the activists, anyway, that are watching what's going on, present company included. So when we get into buying a bunch of, when we get into doing parks, the, the, the park that I have a lot of concerns about, and I don't know if Christina does either, but the, the Sunset Park, that was pretty well discussed before the council voted on it. Now, did the council cash that? Pay for it with cash? The answer is yes. But if it had have been a bond, the council still would have had to vote on it without going to the voters, with a bunch of background information being played out in the community, and if it's a bond, the bond, our bond councils and our financial advisors, two separate folks, come in and give us, give the city council, in open meeting, a bunch of data. So it's not like nobody's watching whether this is gonna hunt or not. That's my point.
I, I, I'm, I'm not saying that it's being done behind closed doors, Frank. That's not my point at all. My, my question is, at what point should the voters have, via votes, an actual say-so in, in, in financial obligation commitments of the city?
I'm, I'm gonna post something that is in 8.10 that might answer a lot of this. It is, uh, I think the second sentence, but I copied it, and I'm just. It is, I think the second sentence, but I copied it and I'm just posting it right here. Notwithstanding any other provision of this charter to the contrary, ordinances authorizing the issuance of bonds, certificates of obligation, warrants, notes, or other evidences of indebtedness, or ordinances authorizing the levy of taxes, or the pledge of revenues to secure payment of indebtedness shall require two readings only in this part, and shall not be subject to referendum. If you want to make a change, I think that's the place to make it.
That's a great, great point, Rob.
And that was why that was so important to me to have it read more than once.
If, if, if we were to strike that phrase, that would not require a referendum, but it would, the council would be accountable to the citizens if they felt like it for not electing to have a referendum. In other words, council could authorize a referendum on it if they wanted to. Correct?
Well, it's not a referendum. You bet. They could have go to the voters. Yeah.
But this sentence basically says they can't because it says, and shall not be subject to a referendum. That's not.
But the referendum, the referendum isn't started by the council.
What if, what if we were to change that language to read and may be if authorized by council approved by binding referendum. That doesn't require council to have the referendum, but it makes it clear they've got the power to have a referendum if they want. If, if, if we could look at something like that, I'm good to walk away from what we've been spending all this time on, on 8.12.
Okay. Reed, tell me that language again, or as best you can.
Uh, let's see. There's only two readings. And, and, and may be presented to the voters for binding referendum if approved by council.
So Gage?
Right.
Um, I want to point out, and I put it in the chat box, what state law says, Local Government Code, Section 271.049, one requires notice of intent to issue COs if that's part of, if that's the kind of focus of the discussion at this, at this point. And it also allows for a voters to petition for a vote on regarding issuance. So.
That's only with respect to a CO.
That's the specific language specifically for a CO. Yes.
Yeah. All, all I'm, all I'm saying is for, for any type of of obligation assumption like that, debt service, that, that we give the council the authority to conduct a binding referendum with the voters.
I have an, I have, I have another possible proposal that, that, that might help on that. And that is. Yeah, never mind.
And if, if council doesn't want to, you know, give the, give the voters a referendum vote, they aren't required to.
Either that, or we can take the provision that Aaron provided and basically say if the city receives a petition protesting the issuance of a bond, CO, warrant, note, or other evidences of indebtedness or ordinances, or authorizing the levies of taxes signed by 5% of the voters, the city must hold an election. Then basically extend that beyond COs to some of that other stuff. Otherwise, I'll just call it, call it something different.
I, I, I would be okay with something like that. I, when we start to accumulate debt like that, I just think the voters should have some process by which they can actually have a voice, a decision making voice in the process.
Absolutely. Being notified. You know, a lengthy notification period too for people to find out, speak up.
If the city's got 10,000 people in it, 5% is 500 people.
Right.
That, that's not all that many.
I mean, if we want to apply this language from the, from the Texas code to all of the financial instruments mentioned in this paragraph, I'm okay with that.
Mr. Roberts, you got any input on this?
Yeah, no, no. I'm, I'm, yeah, no, yeah. Yes. In accordance with state law. No problem. No problem.
I, I was, I was asking Paul if he had any.
I'm sorry.
What he said, kidding. You know, I'm a big believer in letting people, I agree with Gage. That's the short answer. I, I, I would like to, I mean, I liken it to a school bond package. You know, they're out there, you, I mean, you better sell that package if you're not getting the money. You're not getting the bond. But then again, I don't even, actually, that's a whole other can of worms. I wasn't a fan of that package. But yes, I definitely think people need to, need to have a say in things.
A stopgap? Okay. How about you, Carter?
Well, one problem I had in 8.12, there is a statement in there and shall never be debt of the city. That probably would need to be removed.
Well, we, we've already been through that. The, the courts, the constitution and the courts have held that it's not, it's not a debt. It's an obligation and it's something you got to pay back, but it's
Right, right.
Just not defined as a debt, which, you know, that's, that's just crazy government speak, but.
Somatics. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Let me see if I can get something here.
But that's just for revenue bonds. That's not for COs and GOs, right, Aaron? Okay, that's what I.
No, Aaron, 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 come back, come back on live.
I'm here.
Okay.
I'm listening.
I thought you said earlier that there's a provision in state law that if COs are sold, there's a way for folks to stop the CO and have that put, yeah.
Yeah.
My point earlier, and Christina, my point earlier that I wasn't supposed to answer was I'm, I'm okay with putting that in the charter in accordance with state law. That's okay.
But I like it being spelled out because people don't know that.
I'm, I'm, I'm good with that.
But what, what we're talking about is broadening that beyond just COs.
Yeah, agree.
Well, yeah. And let me just sort of quickly, you're talking about debt. Whatever that kind, and there's some other stuff, other kinds of debt that we haven't talked about. But anyway, they're, but these are bonds. Ms. Chairman, I think we're only talking about bonds. We're not talking about all, all means of debt, correct?
This will be anything, anything in that first sentence of 8.10.
Okay. Here's, here's what I, here's what I've got. After, after shall require two readings only, period. And then I have a new sentence that says, in the event the city receives a petition protesting the issuance of bonds, certificates of obligation, warrants, notes, or other evidence of indebtedness that is signed by 5% of the city's qualified voters, the city must hold an election.
I, I thought we were going to do the petition, but is.
That's what I said. The sentence is, the sentence is, in the event the city receives a petition protesting the issuance of, of, of a bond or.
Financial obligation.
Well, yeah, I'm using the line, I'm using all the ones that are listed. Bonds, certificates of obligation, warrants, notes, or other evidences of indebtedness that is signed by 5% of the city's qualified voters, the city must hold an election. So yeah, I'm using the petition.
Yeah. Okay. Good.
Require two only, two readings only? Can we just, can we just say more than one or at least two or something like that? Because two only?
It says it requires two only. They can read it as many times as they want to.
Yeah.
Off, Robert?
If we do, with the petition referencing the code, the, with this option, do we have a city ordinance or do we need one? Or do we need to clarify herein when that petition would have to be received by?
If you're going to apply the petition process to more than what the local government code applies it to, you would have to define the process.
Right.
And so.
So we made this change, the count, that it's kind of just falls on council and now come up with the ordinance to codify this.
Well, the, we, we can probably say, is the, is the procedure outlined in 271.049C, Aaron, or 0.049? I'm just, I'm, I'm just, I could, we could say must hold an election under the procedures outlined in section blah, blah, blah of the Texas Local Government Code.
Towards, towards the end of 8.12, it talks about the city secretary can receive a petition signed by qualified voters equal in number to 10%, at least 10% of the number of registered voters. So the 5% may be okay, but you know, they already have 10% in this.
What section?
8.12, right?
Yeah, towards the bottom in the last paragraph.
1.1. It's after ABC.
Right. After the.
Carter, I think the reason we picked 5% on this one is because that's the language that's used in state law specifically for COs. Right now, we were just applying that to the other types of debt obligations.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we might indicate that, that the 5% is state law and that's where it came from, not from the council.
Okay.
My, my question though was, it is, will the city council have to prescribe when that petition would need to be received by?
So what the law says, and I put, I just put it in the chat box for you, for you guys. If he receives a petition from at least 5% of the qualified voters of the issuer protesting the issuance of their certificates, the issuer may not authorize the, the issuance of the certificates unless the issuance is approved at an election, ordered, held, and conducted in the manner provided for bond elections under Chapter 1251 of the Government Code. So you use the process, the same process as you do for bond elections. It doesn't say when the petition has to be received. It says before the date tentatively set for authorization of the issuance of the COs. So there's some discussion of this in the, in the revenue manual. Um, when you look at the timing, it says a city must publish notices in newspaper of general circulation in the area it intends to issue the COs. Notice must be published once a week or two consecutive weeks with the date of the first publication occurring before the 45th day before the date tentatively set for the passage of the ordinance authorizing the issuance of the COs. If the city maintains a website, you got to put it on the website. The purpose of the 45 days is to give enough time for notice for someone to issue, for someone to do the petition process.
Right.
So we have existing language to address this.
But not in this document.
Not in, not in the statute and not in ordinance.
Okay. So here's, here's what I, here's, I've reworded that sentence. In the, in the event the city receives a petition protesting the issuance of bonds, certificates of obligations, warrants, notes, or other evidence of indebtedness that is signed by 5% of the city's qualified voters, the city must hold an election conducted in the manner provided for bond elections under Chapter 1251 of the Government Code. Does that cover it?
Yeah, you're tying it in there.
Rob, I'm okay with that, but you may want to, instead of describing which section of the state code, just say state law. Because who knows what they're going to do with the specific section.
Yeah, but there's, there, there's not a, there's not an election, there's not an election provided for, for a petition protesting some of these other obligations. We've, we've extended it and, but this is the one that would be used in that one. So I don't think you can say for state law because we're, we're being more protective than the state law.
So what's your reference?
I just posted it. That is, that, that is a new sentence that goes in after two readings only, period.
Okay. So wait, this is, we're still talking about 810?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, you referenced Chapter 1251.
Yes, I do.
That's the state law.
It is. But that, but I'm referencing, I'm referencing, Frank, I'm referencing it just for the manner of how the elections to be held.
Yeah, Rob, this is not a big deal at all. It's just, it's a minor, minor point instead of stating which part of the state law, because the state may do some stuff, who knows where, that you just say in accordance with state law. Not a big deal.
Well, it is a big, it is a big deal because some of these are not provided for in terms of state law. The state law only provides the manner of the election. And these elections are limited simply, strictly for bond or bond elections. Is that, is that right, Aaron?
Yes, that's the section it references.
Yeah. I mean, the state law references the actual chapter number. That's, that's why I'm picking it. Okay. Christina?
Yeah. So we should probably just to follow suit with how it is and other parts of it, we should have signed by five and then in parentheses, the number five.
Yeah.
And then also make sure that we change Section 811 to say 5% as well. Because right now it says 10. Just so the two are in agreement.
This is going to date for the authorization of obligation. This is going to date for the authorization obligation, city. Yeah, correct, that should say five also, does everybody agree, good catch, good catch, Christina.
Carter did it.
Okay, everybody agrees that that should be changed as well, in 811? I will assume from your silence that the answer is yes, okay. All right. I have the exact sentence that I've posted in the. In the chat box, but I've added a parentheses 5%. Parentheses five between the two for consistency sake, but that's, that is. That is, that is what, what I think we're talking about. Does that sound right to you, Gage?
That looks good.
Okay, Christina?
I make a motion to accept the changes that we made in 8.10 with the 5% language on there that you had written in the text at 8:55 PM.
Okay.
As well as the change in the next section to be in agreement saying 5%.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Got a second, all in favor? All right, all right, unanimous, thank, thank you all.
We've reached our nine o'clock scheduled timeframe, where do we go from here?
Well, do we? I think Frank's got some more, more stuff he wants to talk about, don't you, Frank?
I got a question or two, let me find it real quick, we've already been through it, it's a minor point, this is in 318.
318.
This has to do with rates, hello, Gage? This is your rates, come back, Gage, don't moot yourself.
I, 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 I thought we walked away from that one, did we not?
Well, not me.
Oh.
I asked to get, I, at the meeting, I asked to get a copy of a rate ordinance. I didn't get one. So, we don't know, we don't know what the rate is.
I, I.
My problem, excuse me.
Go ahead, no, I'm sorry, I'm interrupting, please, go ahead.
My issue at the meeting is that the method by which those rates are calculated, method, is the rationale, the data, the analysis, that gets you to a rate.
I, I'm in agreement with you, I went back and looked at the ordinance and the fee schedule.
Okay.
And, and in the ordinance, rate is described as the total formulation for what gets charged, okay? My, my, my concern was that. In my previous history of purchasing utilities, when you talked about the rate for utilities, you generally meant the per rata charge, the pro rata charge of the utility, X amount per kilowatt hour or per gallon. But, but since in the ordinance and in the fee schedule, we use the term rate to apply to the entire formulation of what a consumer gets charged, then I am okay with the language as it's written.
Okay, so.
So I would, I would move, Mr. Chairman, I would move that in 3.18. We delete in your document, that in your packet, we delete in 3.18B, the words in red.
Got it.
Gage, you okay with that?
Wait, hang on a second.
Okay, thanks. I'm through.
Okay, you're through, you're through for the night?
Oh, I'm here all night long, Mr. Chairman, if you guys want to hang around, but that's the last, last issue I got.
Okay, that's the last issue, yeah, that's what I wanted to make sure of. Okay. Did anybody else have anything else, or can we, I'm gonna make these changes, I'm gonna put the thing back together, and we'll have a complete redlined document. And. And then we will. You know, what, at some point, what we will do is, is, we'll need to present that. Redlined document, I think what we were talking about last week was, if we can get a complete redlined document into the council packet, then we can prepare a presentation in PowerPoint or. I, you know. Scratch and sniff, or however we want to prepare it to present to council, to, to actually walk, walk through the red lines. And that, that's okay from a notice standpoint, Erin?
It is okay from a notice standpoint, however, I do remember there being a suggestion, a very wise suggestion to have a list of the proposed changes, so that it's easier for council to digest.
Yeah.
I would recommend that you have that in addition to the red line.
Yeah, I, I, I think we can probably get that, get that done before you're, you need it for. Your council agenda and packet. And. The other thing is, 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 and I wanted to talk about, in terms of presenting this to, to the council, I would like to do so in the, in the. In the manner that gives the work done by the committee the best chance of succeeding. And based on that. I would like to, to possibly suggest some presenters that may not have the same. Feelings from council towards. Towards us, I, I, and, and they're fresh, fresh faces and, and, well, some of them's not so fresh, Mr. Roberts' one isn't so fresh, but I was thinking, Gage and Paul might do well presenting this to council, I think they're both well respected, they don't have some of the, some of the baggage that. Maybe, maybe some of us have, and, but I would also state that when it was presented, that I would certainly be there, and I would suggest Frank would be there to, to provide any sort of backup for, if they all of a sudden got fired, a bunch of questions fired at them. Does anybody have any comments on that, or? I did, I, like I said, I'm, I'm more interested in, in how we present it to get the work of the committee through.
Paul's looking surprised.
Yeah. I, I, my, my trepidation, and I'll be frank, I'm just not as proficient, I, I, I don't mind presenting on something I'm proficient with, because I could do a better job presenting, but I'm just not up, up there, up to par, such as I think Gage is, Frank is, Rob, especially Rob, I love, I, I think ideally, Rob, you know, he's, he's our secretary, he's our chairman, he's our, our, our everything, and he knows this inside out. But if he's not comfortable, he's not comfortable, that's okay.
No, I'm, I'm comfortable, I'm, I'm quite comfortable in making a presentation, I just, I.
I think it's important to be able to field the questions on the fly, because I, you know, Paul Prince is gonna have them, I know Kevin is gonna have them, and I don't want to be embarrassed, you know? Cause the question, well, why didn't y'all do this, and this, and this, and how come these, oh shit.
Paul, it's time to shine, it's not a time to be embarrassed.
Well, you go first.
Thanks.
I, so, I mean, I'm just being straightforward, so that's where my nervousness is.
Christina, you got your hand up?
If somebody else feels confident, I, I'll, I'll support him.
I am fully behind Gage, I think that all of the things that Gage brought up, and all of the proposals and the change language of things and the questions that he had, I think Gage should be our, our salesperson, our representative, I think that we should all be there, but I think Gage is, I think Gage should be kind of the one leading. The reviews.
Keep, and keep in, keep in mind that, that a lot of the responses, or a lot of the, the. A lot of the, the responses to questions and, and. Presentation matters are going to be, the committee felt blah, blah, blah. And, you know, as Frank made a very good point, that, you know, personality should be left behind, and whether we voted for it or not, I mean, honestly, if, if I was presenting, I, that's the way I would do it, I'd say the committee felt blah, 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 whether I was, you know, the, the one nay, or whatever, that, that's, it's the committee's work, and that's, that's what I'm.
Is it something you'd be willing to do?
Yeah, I, I, just a couple of things, one is, you know, I, I will, I'll help however the committee thinks it would be best to help in, in the presentation. But the reality is that of the, of the six of us, I'm probably the least experienced in, in the city government operations here in Lago. The, I, I, I do feel like, for, first of all, whatever we present, whoever presents it, this is the work of, of a six-person committee, it's not one person's work, and so I think, I think, and I think council will get that, and to that extent, that's gonna remove any concerns about past history or baggage or anything like that, council knows that it's, it's a group of us coming together, and Rob, you know, I do think you need to play. The prominent role in at least this getting in, in front of council, and then whether some of us, all of us have roles beyond that, I think is great, but, you know, we, we elected you chairman for a reason, and you've been a great chairman in this exercise, so, that's my suggestion.
I appreciate that, thank you.
I think if you were willing, Rob, I, I think it's safe to say that everybody would like to see you be that front man in the presentation.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm willing, I just didn't want to jeopardize the work. Okay, okay. Anything else? We need to, yeah, Frank, and Frank, I hope you're gonna be there, because you got, you got, you got more experience than anybody in this, and, and, you know, as far as, as far as a resume for a city councilman goes, you, you probably had the best resume ever to be elected to city council.
I think Frank could do this just the same, honestly.
Yeah, yeah, given that, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, given that, and I floated this earlier. I, because we've got a long list. It's gonna take a while. To, to go through it, now, if you, if you go in and you say, you know, you, you can summarize stuff, and you've got a document, and you leave it to the council, that doesn't take very long. I don't know that, that, and that's one way to do it, so you get, you get to chair, you get to figure out how you're gonna do that, but fundamentally, we got a lot of changes, I think it's either 42 or 48, do you? Different count. I had suggested that this be done in a work session.
And that, that.
Not, not a regular council meeting.
I think that'd be, I think that'd be. That'd be great, does. Councilor Davila, do you, you think the council has a stomach for a work session on this?
I really can't speak for, for council by myself, but I, I can certainly present it to council to see what their, their idea would be, I think you're talking about a special call meeting, that sort of thing.
Yeah.
Am I correct?
Yes.
Well, that's what I'm suggesting, yeah.
Yeah.
And that, and that gives the chair another week to put together the packet.
Let me, let me talk.
That'd be terrific, yeah, yeah, if you would, if you would liaise on that, and, and try to get back with me as quick as you could on that, I would really appreciate that.
I will try to do that tomorrow.
Thank you.
Rob, I'm not sure if I, I'm not sure if I mentioned it or not, but in terms of availability, I am out. On a hard commitment, the 18th to the 22nd.
Ah, that's right, that's right, okay, well, if, if we get a special session, then, then. Then, then we'll, we'll, we'll present it without you, if it's, if it comes during that.
And it'll, it'll probably come across better.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna play, I'm gonna start working on this tomorrow, as if we aren't going to get a special session, but if, if, I hope we do, I think, I think council will get a better product, and we'll get, we'll get through it probably quicker overall than if we try to do this in a, in a regular meeting, because this would be, this would be, oh gosh.
2 AM.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be, your meetings are long enough without us adding to it.
Yeah, you only got 15 minutes, and you lose some.
It worked, we. Through the public hearing?
I'm out of town from the 16th to the 22nd.
Okay, all right, now, I don't think we're gonna have any meetings during that time, it may just be presentation to council. Paul, did you, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you?
It's all right, well, two things, as we're talking about availability, if it's during the, I mean, a work session would be during the workday, I, there's a high probability I wouldn't be able to stick around for the full thing, I'm, I'm just beyond, inundated right now, and it's just, my light of work is not something I can just put off to another time.
Thank you, yeah, no, I get it. A special call meeting would, could probably be in the evening.
Okay.
I don't know that I'd be there today.
Acknowledging that, the other question is, even though the, the normal session is, is least likely, I am just curious to know, would that be a public hearing?
Oh, yeah.
There would be a public hearing, okay.
A special call meeting would be a public hearing, wouldn't it, Erin?
This agenda item would not be a public.
And Mr., yeah, yeah, I'm suggesting a special call meeting, and literally that it would be agenda stated as a work session, so they can't vote on anything.
And that's good, because that, that, that type of a venue provides for the council to have good opportunity to pick our brains and better understand how we arrived at some of these decisions.
Sure, sure, that works, that works. But as, as a work session, is it, it's still gonna be a public meeting, isn't it, Erin?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay. All right. Well, let's, let's, let's shoot for that, yes, Arch?
Yes, this would, this is a special call meeting, we're still gonna have to notice the meeting, and very likely, very likely, the, the meeting time would probably have to be in the late afternoon, early evening, something like that, but I'll, let me get with the mayor and see what details we can work out, and I'll get back to you tomorrow, if at all possible.
Thank you, thank you.
When's the next council meeting, Arch?
The next council meeting will be the. I'm sorry?
It's the 15th.
Yes, the 14th, yes.
Next week, Thursday.
Yeah, y'all could do it on the 15th then, yeah, you could do it on the 15th, you could decide to have that special meeting on the 15th, ooh, but it's not posted, no, you don't have to post a special meeting, do you?
Yes, you have.
Yes, you do.
Of course you do.
Yes.
Of course you do. No, what I meant is, can the council decide on the 15th to have a special call meeting the next week?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Seven, two hours.
Okay, all right, all right, that's what I thought, okay.
Great.
Would that be, would that be your preference, deserving to?
Yeah, I think that would be, that would be great, and if you need me there, if you need me there on the 15th to help, help push. help push that through, then I'm fine with that too. But, um, uh, but yeah, I, that would be my preference is to have a special meeting the following week. That still gets us in, under all the other deadlines, I believe.
What, one, one caveat I'd like to request is I, I think it'd be great is if they could do the, uh, the hybrid meeting if at all possible instead of in person, such as the council meetings, they've chosen to do at the council meetings. So that we can attend via Zoom. Go to meeting.
I'll make that recommendation. I'm going to be, I'm going to be, uh, chairing the, uh, July 15th, uh, council meeting. Uh, so, you know, we'll have to work out the details between the, the mayor and me before he leaves because he's going to be on vacation then. Um, so I'll, I'll, to work that out and see how, how best to handle that.
When's he go on vacation?
He, he gets to go on vacation once a year about this time.
When? And Erin knows where I'm going. Huh?
He's going to be gone that, that week.
Yeah, but you know when he's leaving.
I do not know when he's leaving. I, all I know is that he will not be.
You may be running the boat before the 15th. So who's putting together, the agenda for this Thursday's has already been published.
It's not published yet.
Next Thursday.
For the 15th. Okay.
One for the 15th. Yeah. I'll get as much detail as I can for you, Mr. Durbin.
Thank you.
And, uh, I'll, I'll get back to you tomorrow.
Okay, that sounds good.
I'm sorry, just Erin, real quick, one more, one more thing on, on accolades. I, is, you know, Rob, I think we've all given you lots of accolades. Uh, Councilman Davila, you've attended all these and you've, you've hung through it. I think council liaison, you guys have to sit through long meetings like this, plus your own meetings. Thank you for, for, for being a part of the process.
Yes, you're certainly welcome. And let me, let me state that I actually was the one that put forward the idea of having the charter review. In fact, is the two reviews that we've had, I have been the, the instigator, so to speak.
All right.
My, my only suggestion is to start instigating a little earlier so we get a little more time. I appreciate it.
There was, Erin was going to jump in with something a moment ago.
The only thing I would say is, uh, as a quick reminder to, um, our chairman, we do have to have minutes, so we will need to have another meeting where the.
They all get approved.
Adopted.
Okay. Okay. Let me get them together first and then we'll get them approved. Does that, that, that work? Okay. All right. I think that's all I have for tonight. Anybody else have anything else? Yes, Mr. Devon.
Yes, I, I'm going to echo the, the words of Mr. Roberts. I think you guys have done an admirable job. It's been a long, hard pull. I can see that. And I can see that you spent a lot, a lot of time organizing your thoughts and presenting them to the rest of the committee. And, uh, you're to be allotted for that. Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you.
Absolutely. Fantastic job, Rob.
Too. I'm excited for our compromises.
Yeah. Nobody called anybody any names. That's great. Um, okay. Um, does anybody want to bring forward our favorite motion?
I'll make a motion to, uh, end the meeting.
All right. Thank you, folks.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.